Land of the rising sun we love and cherish. We love and hold and honor our brave heroes.
This meeting is being recorded.
Our lives are wished of grace. We shall protect our heart from all our faults. But if the price is that for all we hold dear, then let us die without a shred of fear. Hail to be a consecrated nation. Oh Fatherland, give me your solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Spilling our blood will count our freedom late. The women stand that which have fallen so free shall always be a land of liberty. We shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal. And through the crucible unscape we'll pass. When we are void, the wounds of battle to heal. We shall remember those who guide him us. Then shall our triumph let fill the glorious song of victory we score, oh mighty Rome. Oh God, protect us from the ill before. Guide all our movements lest we go astray. Give us the strength to hear the human's call. To give a nod to count the costly chain. Let's all rule to serve with resoluteness. To make this sky a land of righteousness.
All hail Beaufra, land of the rising sun. We love and cherish. We have vanquished all enemies. All hail Beaufra. God bless Beaufra. In him we trust. Shout it, sing it, all hail Beaufra. God bless Beaufra. We have emerged triumphant from all our foes. Through the crucible unscape we passed victorious. Our trumpets pealing the glorious song. Play it, sing it, all hail Beaufra. All hail Beaufra. We shall always remember all that perished. In the struggle for our freedom, all hail our heroes. Our prayers shall be borne both day and night. Save them always, all hail Beaufra. All hail Beaufra. Now our star shines everywhere. We crave humility. God guide and protect us all. All hail your wisdom. Shielding us from glory unleashed by all and light and men. Beaufra, Beaufra, shining forever.
And the time starts now. The morning heroes pass, we celebrate them. And our heroes living. As we continue to fight on to see that Beaufra is fully restored. You say, you say, you say.
I say.
I say.
You're all welcome to yet another wonderful day where we gather in the US Town Hall Meeting. And we welcome the acting Prime Minister His Excellency Honorable Chukwutukun Kere to US North and South Region of the world. And today, we hope to see that we do Beaufra wonder in America. So at this very point, welcome everyone, everyone. And thank you for all your support to the Beaufran people. And I hand over the mic to the host of the day, Honorable Ebemilike and your team. I'm happy to be in your midst. Thank you so much, sir. Please unmute yourself, sir.
Thank you, sir, my minister of communications, Mazie, Honorable Sony Akbarawa. And welcome Beaufrons. Let us go to our one who will lead us in prayer.
Honorable Ebemilike.
Yes, sir.
Please help us do well to change that your background because of what is written there for us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just change it and put another background.
Okay, give me a minute.
Yeah. Okay, while our honorable rep between that, Honorable Love, I think you are the one to take the next item on the agenda. Over to you, Honorable Love.
Yes. And they were no, and they be Beaufra.
They were.
As our custom demands, we need to go to our Chukwoki Kama and seek permission before we proceed. So let us pray. Father Almighty, we, your children, have gathered one more time. And we thank you for making it possible to bring us. For that, we are grateful. Oh God, our help in ages past. You are our hope for all the years to come. You have been our shelter as the storm blast. We trust your arm to keep leading us. Sufficient for us is your arm alone through all eternity. Father, we bring our leaders to your presence. Mazenamdekanu. Mazesaimoneba. Maziokechukuukere. I ask that you be with them as always. Surround them with your presence. Grant them the strength, the courage they need to continue in this journey. That they willingly accepted to lead your children through this turbulent time. We ask that you speak for them as you spoke for Moses. We ask that you guide them and protect them as you protected Daniel in the lion's den. Because that's exactly where they are. But we trust your arm to surround them. Comfort them when they are alone and they are wondering, what have I gotten myself into? Just like Moses wondered how he got himself into leading these stiff-necked human beings. But we trust you, everlasting Father, to lead them through. We bring the Beaufran children, these stubborn human beings you made. Many of them, we can't even reach them. But we know you made them, you know their hearts. You know their thoughts. Those who are destined to be rescued, please, Almighty Chukwoki Kama, rescue them. Those who are destined for destruction, may they have easy passage to their destination. But don't let them drag the innocent ones with them. We pray for our men and women on ground battling the devil in human forms. We ask your protection. It's only you who can protect them. Grant them the same victory you granted David when he faced Goliath. We trust you that you can do it for us. We pray for our families. Protect them, comfort them, provide for them. Let them look up and see Beaufra in front of them. So that we give them hope to endure the current problem. As we gather here now to do the work you asked us to do, we ask that you be in our midst. Guide our thoughts. Lead us and grant us our heart desire according to your will. We ask for, for you to grant us our desire, both the ones we can remember and the ones we can't remember. Because you already know what we need. We are just reminding you of your promise to our forefathers. We are that remnant that you spoke about. Use each and every one of us individually and collectively to accomplish this task that is ordained by you. In Chukwoki Kama's name, I pray. Amen. You say.
I say.
I say.
He said.
He said, he said, he said, he said. Do we have our rep back? Honorable rep, over to you, unmute yourself, sir. You can start your camera.
Yeah, okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, my minister of information.
Okay, yeah, the background is wonderful now. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome, sir.
Please, I meant no disrespect. It was just because of what was praying up there. Uh, we need to be careful.
I got you, I got you. I'm good, I'm good. Um, let's see. So greetings, Beaufrons. And that was a wonderful prayer, Honorable Love. And
Thank you, sir.
I am privileged to introduce our guests. So join me, Beaufrons, wherever you are to introduce the head of our government, His Excellency. Honorable Okay, Chukwutukun Kere, our acting, let me stress that, our acting prime minister. So we welcome him. And at the same time, we'd like to welcome all the ministers in the house and the media teams specifically. My information minister, Honorable Akbarawa. And our sister, mother, Honorable please pardon me, I think her name just slipped my memory. I also like to welcome the rest of the media team. Those that are always in space, on, I mean, Z, X space. So I also welcome them. And also welcome my COS. I understand that he wasn't feeling well. And oh, praise is the most high. He is recovering. And I pray that he will continue to make fast recovery. I also like to remember the rest of the honoreables in the house. And also our admins, our liaison reps, our deputy reps. I have this privilege to introduce you all. Thank you for coming to honor this invitation that Bridgey USA North and South put out there. And we will do our best. We will do our best to host you. And it's saying that we will, we ask that we will maintain the time schedule such that every one of us will be able to enjoy this program and be able to leave timely. That being said, I'd like to kick it off by presenting the cola. The Cola Nut, which is a tradition and custom of Beaufrons. I mean, if you go to visit any Beaufran, they will present you with something, usually Cola Nut. And in this case, we have both Cola Nut and Alligator Pepper. And it just so happens that I don't have lime. I believe it's limestone or chalk or some kind of, well, for let me just put the name in our native language that is Unzo. And Unzo is specifically for the ladies. And so I present this color. And as I present this color, I would like to say a word or two with this color as I present it. And please bear with me. This color is, I don't know if you can see it. I'm going to try to tilt it a little bit. Maybe, I don't know if
Raise it up, raise it up, sir.
You know, so I am, okay, maybe, okay, here we go.
There you go.
Here we go. This is the Alligator Pepper. And this, this are the, this is the Cola Nut. It's not as fresh as it usually will be, but but it is Cola Nut. And so I am going to sit down and make this prayer for the simple fact that I am battling with some disability. But so greetings, Beaufrons. I would say this prayer in English. Chukwoki Kama, who made everything, understands all languages, all of them. And so he will also understand the language I'm using now. So in our culture, it's usually said that whoever brings cola brings life. And and we are not going to do any different. And this is very, is much more important this time for us. Because as we see, many of our people whose life are being snuffed out prematurely. We have a responsibility to say prayers every day. And as we gather here as a people, this color, with this color, we are calling on our ancestors, on our elders, those who have passed on, on all those whose life were ended prematurely. We are calling on their spirits to come and join us. And we ask and say that our elders come and have a piece of this Cola Nut. We call on the whole of Beaufra to come and have a piece of this Cola Nut. We call on our leaders in Beaufra to come and share in this Cola Nut. We also call on the people whose land we are, you know, residing in. We call on their people and their elders to also come and share with this Cola Nut. And we thank all who are going to grace this occasion. And we ask them to come and join us in this Cola Nut. And now let me say a short prayer. Chukwoki Kama, forgive us our sins, there are many. And as I present this Cola Nut on behalf of New York, I pray that you will bring understanding, knowledge and wisdom to all who call themselves Beaufrons. That they will wake up from their slumber. And that they will realize that their fellow Beaufrons are here and will always be looking for them. We do not want to chase anybody away. Because we value all Beaufrons, all genuine Beaufrons. And I stress genuine, Father, because there are those though they speak our languages, though they know much of our traditions and customs, their fathers are not Beaufrons. Their fathers are actually those who wish us harm and would like to exterminate us. So I ask you, heavenly Father, to show us your mercy, to show us your grace. And not just show us, for us also to accept these mercies and to accept this grace and to do your will in your holy, mighty, precious name, I pray. You say. You say.
He said.
He said.
He said.
And as I pick this color, I will also invite our guests. And first, I would like to invite the states that are of the Bridgey USA North and South to come up. And also, as you come up, in order to make this process move a little faster, I, when you come up, it be, you will be picking up the color and also announce you will be picking up the color and also announcing whatever contribution your state is giving us. So I pick this Cola Nut with the sum of three hundred Ajema.
Hmm, thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
And I invite
Thank you.
The states.
Thank you.
He said.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Thank you, Rep. God bless you. Appreciate you. Thank you, everyone.
Yes. Uh yes, I do. Yes, I do. So Texas, Texas would like to pick color with uh uh three hundred and fifty Ajema today. And these are the contributors. Uh I have um my father, uh hundred Ajema, Honorable Chini, our deputy, Eddie Ajema, myself, hundred Ajema, and Honorable Abigail, fifty Ajema. Uh for now, I'll come back for more updates and then.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Texas.
Thank you so much, Honorable Retcher.
Please kindly give us the total.
Three fifty.
Three hundred and fifty Ajema.
Thank you.
So so that when you reach out, they ask you where you go, you say, see where I go, see the color I take. Cause some people go Brian somewhere, say they've been come here and not get what you have to show us evidence. Well, my good love, over to you.
There were no more Biafra.
There were.
There were.
All right, so they said we should come and eat cola. All right. Today in a chop chop.
Mm hmm.
Anyway, from New York.
Hey.
Hey, yo.
Hey, hey, hey.
Ah, um Bridgette is well, let me say the way she says it. Because I don't wanna be charged. Police cannot go to jail.
Hey, police can go, police can go in this one, oh.
Not me, oh. Not this, not this police that went to church today. I ain't going to no jail. Mm hmm. So the Biafran Adan said that she is going to, I should announce this as a drink. She is taking on behalf of APM.
Wow.
That is fifty Ajema.
Wow.
Uh huh. So you guys are my witnesses. And she is welcoming APM and his entourage with three hundred Ajema. So it's three twenty from her.
My goodness.
Uh huh. Unzoma did not specify, so his own welcoming is three hundred Ajema.
Wow, New York.
Rosemary. I don't know why Rosemary is not here.
New York don't catch fire.
I know she, she has something, but she can speak. She is giving three hundred Ajema.
Oh, goodness.
Oh, goodness.
Edith.
Yo. Oh, goodness.
My goodness.
Edith, my, my faithful member, very faithful at her Biafra, she is. She is at work. So she can't be here. She gave her three hundred Ajema.
Hey.
Love.
Mm hmm.
On behalf of New York, is taking the cola with fifty Ajema and welcoming APM with three hundred Ajema.
My goodness.
New York, one thousand six hundred Ajema.
Oh.
Uh huh.
Oh, hello, Biafran.
Oh, hello, Biafran. Okay, let's sing for them. New York, they are young ma. New York, who know they are young ma. Oh, yeah, Chi Ma Raisa, na mada puri na ya.
Oh, yo, yo.
There were no. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Donos.
Hey. Hey, hey.
Hey, yo.
Now we there here.
Hey, yo. Now we there here. Thank you, New York. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you so much. God bless. Thank you. Um for those that have donated already, we appreciate you. Thank you, thank you.
Biafrans are jumping up. Hello, carry go, my people.
God bless you guys. Hey, yo, we move, we move.
Yes, yes, yes.
Wonderful people of America, North and South. Hey, you guys are doing miracle, oh? Miracle, miracle.
No shaking.
Miracle, miracle.
Hey, New York, who know what are now what are for my time?
Miracle.
Uh uh old John put it, but I, we just five people.
It is well, my dear.
But um where you go to prove, we go there go.
I tell you. Oh, but mighty, oh, but mighty.
Letting have fi- letting have five people, what five people did?
Ah.
He's in the house. That's one day.
That is marvelous.
Very impressive, very impressive.
Hey.
You people are real Umu Chineke, oh?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
I don't know.
Yes, New York is exceptional.
There were.
They've done exceptional.
Thank you, thank you.
Is the Big Apple.
Yes, yes.
New York, you, you guys are beginning to challenge Texas now, right?
No, no, we are, we are just on our own corner.
When I begin to, to, to try yours, I mean.
New York, New York, I've got team, you don't make noise. Rather, anybody who wants to know what New York is doing, just request for our international reports.
So now we there here, no shaking, no shaking one name.
Now say, now say with the carry go.
Thank you, New York. Thank you so much. We appreciate.
Thank you, my people.
Thank you, thank you. All right, let us come to our headquarters. Maryland, where we have the Biafra Republic Government in exile headquarters worldwide.
Oh, yeah, Biafra.
All right. Oh, there were no. Great, great Biafrans. I'm happy to be here. Um Maryland liaison um is welcoming APM with two hundred and ten Ajema.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Maryland.
Honorable Nonya hundred Ajema. Uh Mazie Gorgi fifty. And um Ezeyada Jones Mary sixty Ajema. So that will be one, uh, two ten, two ten Ajema. There were.
Thank you, Maryland.
Reverend, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Maryland.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Akanchawa, akanchawa to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Please, let's sing for them all. Let's sing for them.
All right, definitely. All right. Akamarama kaiga, kurundi Marylando. Akamarama ma. Hey, yo.
Thank you.
Hey, 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 hey.
Hey.
Anagubakeba.
Anakoa, anakoa. Kunaka, kunaka.
Uh, again, eh.
Again, eh, again, eh, again, eh. Thank you, Maryland. Thank you, Maryland. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we come to Ebere Chuku Techno. Over to you.
Yes, sir, I need your room. Yes, sir, and I have, hey, wait, wait. Uh, so I want to sew some seeds. And I, I will use all my um ideas to sew these seeds. Okay, so um for I will go to Oji, we may APM welcome. APM, what could you ma? Okay, now stand in Charlie Nobeo, so we stand the one behind you.
Yes, so.
Yes.
You are a good man. Nobody can fool us because our eyes are open and we are not fools.
No.
My lot ago, so to welcome you today and to support to what we are doing. Yes, so, so I'll use this my account to put in thirty Ajema for now for Ewalo Oji. Yes, so.
Thank you.
Honorable Becky. Yes. Ewalo, are you hearing me? I'm no go.
Is this in Kiro, our own Kiro?
Thirty Ajema.
Oh.
I think my yes, it is the one thousand and fifty.
Ah.
I'm Kiro, I knew. I'm Kiro, la Zebre Chukutan.
It sounds in Kiro, but it's a different name.
I'm Kiro.
Okay. Thank you, my dear sister.
I'm going for you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ebere Chuku.
Let's sing for them all. Let's sing for uh Ebere Chuku Techno.
Ebere Chuku, okay, I'm one of. Akamarama kaiga, kurundi Marylando. Ah.
There were. There were one name.
Hello, Mr. CK.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, we come to we come to Nkudi Number. Nkudi Number, over to you, sir.
Um greetings, sir, honorable, sir, honorable, my ladies. Our, uh, just not to, uh, right, honorable. Okay, Kere, um, I think Prime Minister of Bridgie. Uh, please, before I go on, I want to correct uh something if I'm permitted.
Um, please, don't go to correct anything. Before you go correct the thing, we will go cross leg, no correct, just go ahead. Send me, send me a message, uh huh.
Okay, sorry, it will not repeat again. Our ladies, please, you don't take cola or you do present your opus. Okay, you, you take opus or, you don't take cola, Nicola, don't blame no time, please, okay? But God continue doing that. Thank you.
I don't hear.
Okay, that one, you can correct them, that one, so that the day we will carry them, go out, they know we go this grace.
And um and uh to do the special, um, Oji, Oji had the honorable Kama Kambozo. Um, Oji honorable Kambozo. And there were, oh, thank you so much, my people. I love you all. I want to uh take the color with thirty Ajema. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And uh we, we will not always allow our women to go out alone. In big ceremonies where colas are presented. So we will always be with them and they will be by our side. So when it's time for cola and now we go, uh huh, when we chew them, we become put them for their mouth with kiss. Mm hmm, they will contest to know how it be.
Yes, so.
Thank you, Nkudi Number. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And please, uh, we remind everyone, uh, for now, you don't use the website, only PayPal and um DZ. So continue to remember this until when APM says otherwise. Thank you so much as we move. Please, let's sing for Nkudi Number.
Ah. You couldn't have started anymore. Revenque de anima. Chi Ma Raisa, na mada puri na ya.
Thank you.
I hope so that they hear my bell, sure.
If they come out, some more, some more. Thank you, thank you. All right, we come to BMO. BMO, over to you.
Hey, my honorable, our soni, he's one of Biafra land.
No.
I greet you.
No.
I greet my able APM. Okay, Chukua Kama, Nkere, Ezimwe. I greet you, every one of you. Uh, as American rep, I greet you, American, honorable American. Joy, uh, love of New York, honorable love, I greet you also, honorable. Honorable also, all of you, I greet all of you. On behalf of Okigwe and our brother Allo, I'm taking a Cola Nut to welcome our APM to America with the sum of fifty Ajema. Thank you very much.
Never.
Thank you, thank you very much.
There were, there were our BMO.
There were, there were.
Our BMO, let's sing for BMO, please.
Okay.
BMO.
All right. Akamarama kaiga, kurundi Marylando.
Ah.
Oh, again, eh. There were.
Thank you, BMO, thank you. We come to Amaka. Amaka, over to you.
There were no.
There were.
There were. Stop. Anya, nako. Okay. Alaba. Akamarama, see I stop. Daluna, Anya Obunawo, Umu Chineke. Um, there were.
Umu Chineke, no.
I greet you, uh, sweet sisters. Love, Chini, Mkiro.
We love you.
My able uh rep, Emelike.
There were man.
Minister of Information, the wise one, the wise one.
Mm hmm.
Thanks to our PM, wherever you are. Our indomitable leader Mazinamdekanu. And the, the man on the um, how do I put it? APM. They say that nobody loved you, but a lot of people, at least seventy-eight people here loved you, sir. We love what you are doing for us. We understand what you are going through. It's not easy, it's not an easy joke or easy. The shoe is too big, I always say, but grace will take you. Grace will sustain you. Grace will keep you. And at the end of the journey, everybody will say, is that how God works?
Mm hmm.
Yes.
By yourself, but it's grace of God, the we that are supporting you. You will make it, sir. He said, on behalf of Ayu, we are, I in a, uh, Nabata APM with two hundred Ajema.
Hmm.
Uh.
Wow.
Oh, Ayu, no de anima.
Hey, guys, finish it back while you were.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, the hundred Ajema came from Wada Glad and the Wada Amaka. I see, Ka Nigeria Wesley, Ghana, Nilo, Na Iku, Ohio, Hunu, Nazo, there were.
There were.
Thank you.
There were. All right. Taigo Zianego. Oh, well.
Oh, Ayu, no de anima. Oh, Ayu, no Marama. Amaga puri na ya. Hey, yo, hey, yo.
Hey, hey.
There were, oh, Ayu.
There were. Ah, you may la.
Ah, you no waka, oh.
There were, there were. Oh, Ayu, there were. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, we come to um honorable Nanzo Victor, over to you.
Okay. All right, uh, there were, my people, we are here again to make it happen live.
Yes, so.
Yes, sir.
Uh, if I, if my camera can be omitted, but because these people should not think that it's AI that is donating all this money.
Hehehe, that's your.
That's true, you talk, though.
I just, I just, I just, I just, so thank you. Thank you, my Minister of Information. So you know, many of them say we, we are jobless. So we don't know what we are doing. So but for now, I hope so I never forget Portugal, Portugal's the day. So from Portugal, from here, representing. So I'm supporting today's town hall meeting with fifty Ajema. So, from Portugal, from here, representing, so I'm supporting today's town hall meeting with fifty a gemma. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
And they, and they, and they now trading also, then also, and I'm here, one million. How more I need for?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Brother and there were.
One night worker is the anima. One night working marama. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, chi me reze, na ma na pu ri na ya. Thank you, honorable Nonsu, we love you.
There were.
I can shower.
There were, thank you, thank you.
Go the regio.
Thank you, we come to Honorable Kiroka, over to you, your hand is up.
Oh, I'm already here.
Yes, so.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so, Ukudi number, say, 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 Gina, Oybo, and the man, a man, man was watching. Natural on the side, that, okay, so. Yeah, my well of now, okay, okay, let me take eh. Angara now.
Werenzo.
Yes, angara, Tita Cola, uh, Uzo. Take your pick. Everything.
But eh, you can as well call me, I will take, then I go chew, then I will come give you.
That, that's allowed, though.
Uh huh.
Ah huh.
Let me take that one now, eh, so, Honorable Number, I want to take eh, Oji. Eh, eh, as the sunny say, eh, eh, he will treat for me.
Mm hmm.
So, I'm taking eh, Oji with eh, fifty a gemma. Eh, so, A P M, uh, um, welcome, eh, hey, I take, um, we welcome, I welcome you with eh, fifty a gemma. Hmm.
Thank you.
I will wanna moreji. So I hand Oji over to Mazze, Sunny, Abarawa.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Eh, you would want that, eh, boy. Uh, sorry, sorry, so that will be eh, one hundred a gemma, right?
One hundred.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, but because of thirty, you can, fifty.
Okay, one thirty, okay, okay.
One thirty, okay, honorable Kiro.
No, no, not one thirty.
Eighty. Eighty, yes, mm hmm, eighty.
Okay. Alright, honorable Kiro imarama. Mm hmm. Agunwa i de anima. Mm hmm. Onye chi me reze, na ma na pu ri na ya.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
There were. There were.
There were.
I can shower, I can shower the regio.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, Honorable Major, over to you, your hand is up.
Alright, uh, so just a quick update from Texas. I have eh, one that tochi that just eh, blessed us with eh, um, eighty a gemma. So bringing Texas to four hundred and thirty a gemma.
Oh. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Texas. Texas imarama. Mm hmm. Omuchuku da anima. Mm hmm. Onye chi me reze, na ma na pu ri na ya.
Oh, no.
Honorable Mediam, please, I didn't get that.
This eh, honorable, now it's four hundred and thirty from Texas, four thirty.
Okay, thank you, my people. I bless you all. Thank you so much. Who, who was the, who was the donor?
Eh, one that tochi.
Tochi, okay, thank you so much.
You can put it under Texas.
It's there under, under Texas, so that brings Texas to three, eh, four thirty.
Four thirty.
Alright, got it, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable, now your hand is up.
Oh, yes. Um, so, um, Ezia the Angela, uh, uh, is welcoming A P M with fifty a gemma. Making it two hundred and sixty for Maryland. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Maryland.
You're welcome. There were.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, we come to Ukudi number, your hand is up again.
Yes, sir, I think I misunderstood, okay? My ladies, all you have to do, you can present, you are presenting oh, also. You, oh, also, you present, oh, also, okay? Eh, as long as you, man, I want you to present, oh, so, and eh, Oji had a no be care, why, eh, why, eh, maybe, eh, man, who, why, eh, the akanzu. Why la manzu, Biko, oh, amay, eh, that. Biko can connect, oh, I think, uh, so that's not what I'm saying. Yeah, maybe well, oh, also. Eh, oh, why?
Ah, he knew it, they were ulataya.
Uh, but Mazze, Soni say. Eh, Biko, oh, um, um, why, eh, la, eh, kahari, me, eh, eh, ah, motor from, eh, 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 maybe, oh, oh, why, eh, oh, my, dalon, oh.
Oh, comment. That. I am the.
Bugo zod, oh, dalon, oh, I'm proud of you.
I'm proud of you too. Dalor. Oh, my God. This our culture is very, very special, we love it.
Yeah.
Unique.
Alright, we move, we come to, eh, we don't sing for Ukudi number, let's sing for Ukudi number, the last speaker.
Okay. Akamara makaiga. Ku di number eh. Ah.
Again eh.
Ukudi number, I'm not about quack and finally case, like, oh, Tonyo.
Yeah.
Yeah, go to man, oh, pangar. Exactly.
Don't come complain, Tony, yeah?
Alright eh.
Eh, I don't give back a lot again, you no complain now.
Freedom for all, freedom for all, over to you, freedom for Biafra. Freedom for Biafra, admit yourself, over to you.
Yeah, good evening, Biafrans.
Go ahead, there were.
There were.
Okay, without wasting time, I, I, I will support with eh, twenty a gemma. Eh, last time I made eh, the national of fifty from Sweden, so I'm gonna rid, redeem everything eh, right away.
You from Sweden?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Akamara makaiga. Ku ru, freedom of Biafra, oh. Ah. Ah. Marama.
I missed that, how much is that?
Fifty a gemma.
Twenty.
Yeah, gemma.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. And please eh, nothing on the website, avoid the website, only make use of PayPal.
Yeah, I, I, I am aware, I'm going to check the, this, I, I think, I think I have the, this, what is it? Um, paper, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, bye bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
So, Biafra Blood, over to you, Biafra Blood. Biafra Blood, over to you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Hmm, good evening, my A P M, good evening, my mothers and fathers, good evening, my Biafran people, brothers and sister. I just from eh, Germany, I want to support the program with twenty a gemma, from Germany.
There were.
Thank you so much.
There were.
God bless you.
Bless you.
Abukwana kamarama makaiga. Ku ru, Biafra Blood, do. Ah. Hello.
Thank you, thank you. We come to Honorable Keo, Honorable Keo.
Eh, in the Germany, yala, oh. Hmm.
Ah, there were no, thank you.
There were.
Honorable. Now, now, who they greet in the Germany, uh, beg, eh, uh, Abalaha, yes. In the, in the, in the Germany, I beg, eh, we they go where they call us and where they no call us. So, now, so our problem be rich.
You know, now, ona Hitler, na Hitler, ona they represent.
You know, now, whoever don't live with Hitler, you go, you must learn so many things. So, how talk and how, and how to hide.
Why, no, we never need talk that one, oh.
Uh huh. I'm a morning, I know, eh, eh, I, I talk, I talk again.
Kabi la me Eliza.
I know, na, 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 got to my, na, got to my Eliza, na him, na him talker, I know.
Why did you not tell Eliza?
There were no, there were no, there were no.
There were.
There were. Eh, yes, it is how it's supposed to be, we turn Chukokabiamma for everything.
Yes.
Eh, well, I, I not get to talk eh, much now. Eh, before sleep will carry me eh, commode. I will want to collect my own cola note with eh, seventy a gemma. There were.
Thank you.
Um, eh, also, eh, I'm, I'm, honorable, I beg, it gets one eh, deeper talk where I, I get with somebody. I was trying to lecture him about this eh, all this eh, memo, the contents in the memo. And the first place, I found something, um, uh, scanning in that memo. They posted two point memo, but it's supposed to be four, four point. First, the issue was, the Prime Minister instructed that the account should be returned to its old self. This was, this was, I don't know, somehow, hidden from the memo, that's supposed to be the first agenda, the first point. Eh, eh, Honorable Ke. Continue the question with eh, um, eh. Honorable Ke. Two issues. Honorable Ke, can you hear me? Eh, yes, yes. Okay, please, let me use this opportunity to address that very first point, please. At this point, our P M is in detention. And he's also undergoing court cases. And they have not decided the final jurisdiction yet. So anybody that is coming, whether you are privy to have any communication from Finland and then you're coming to the media. Come and write a memo and put his name, put it straight like that. What are you trying to portray to the world?
Yes.
We are telling Finland that P M has nothing to do with account or finance or defense. Then on the website, it is stipulated that defense and finance and accounting is classified. And then you're going to drag P M's name that is in detention to put in a memo and circulate it. Are you trying to help Finland to go back to start investigating P M on his involvement in account and finance and defense, or what? No, no, actually, I understand, that is why, I just want. No, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Honorable Ke, hold on, it is not for you, I'm not asking you the question, it is for those that put up that memo there, mm hmm.
Mm hmm.
But the right thing is, instruction is from the government, B R G I A government, that you should restore the website back to the way it is. Don't go and put.
Exactly.
Don't go and put P M's name there that is in detention inside the memo and start interpreting. If you don't put P M's name, wouldn't you talk to Biafrans? Don't you know eh, eh, political or diplomatic way of passing message to the Biafran people without dragging P M's name into it? So that, that alone, we pull that out, we cross that with red pen, out. Because you to put P M into trouble, uh huh.
Mm hmm.
Then, every other thing there that is written, we condemn. The only thing that you people did that was wrong, that we came and say it can't happen, go and turn it back, start from that website. So go and put everything back, stop coming to tell Biafrans, A P M agreed that you should have first and second account or all a new account, it is a lie. A P M is not dead, it cleared the air yesterday that it never. How can someone that is fighting that you restore the back, eh, restore back the website to the normal? We will now come and tell you, okay, go and bring second account with Adano who inside, where is that done? It's not done.
The Bubagu account.
Bubagu account that Adano who will be inside and Adano who was with Nkosi, they are the one that created this accountability crisis that we are inside here today now. And then they are coming to come and dig another well of accountability, accountability, accountability. Uh huh, so, the message is straight, go and restore the website back to its original way.
Even if. Put the money back.
And put all the money that.
All the money.
All the money that EU donated in their town hall meeting. And eh, and eh, eh, which other town hall meeting we had before, eh, Asia.
Aludo.
Mm hmm. And eh, all the money that.
That also lobby, lobby money that is in there.
All the money that people have donated before past two weeks, return all of them back to the right place. Mm hmm, don't go and start looking for P M's name and put inside memo or don't put his name or do this, we don't bloody care about that one. We are at war and we have a lot to do, it's not time to start chasing rats. So when you do that first, Biafrans will now reconsider whether they will listen to you. But there's one thing I have to tell all of you, if you bite my oblocus once, I will not do mistake to put my oblocus for your mouth, to even have the opportunity to bite the second time. So that is very clear. But for now, go and restore everything that you have destroyed in the website the way it was. And they should stop using P M's name in memo circulating upside down, because you're putting him into another trouble.
Oh, my people.
Yeah, yeah, yes, thank you, no, no, it's, I understood, so I just eh, hint it so that eh, you can eh, 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 see how best to present it. Because eh, some people are making it as a point, eh, they never saw, saw that instruction, or so since they want to eh, 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 hear, see instruction. So we just, so it, eh, bring back that eh, eh, send memo for them to eh, see what actually is written there. So that in the end, they quick, quick, we eh, quick, so that is just my contribution, please. Eh, that's our sister from Germany, I throw an olive eh, branch. Eh, can you please reach out to me later, because eh, eh, that voice, I never heard him before. Okay. If you are stay here. Yeah, maybe, maybe that is eh, new, that is the new eh.
Oh, Biafra Blood.
The new Biafra Blood that has been converted with the attack of coup lotters against the government, then God. Yeah, that is why, I want to spot, I want to spot her so that eh, eh, I will see. She, she. We better. Eh, if she can just eh, raise her hand so that eh, I will see. Was that eh, Biafra Blood, I think it was Biafra Blood.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking for, I'm looking for her.
Ha, ha, eh, eh, okay, let, let me.
Biafra Blood.
Okay, Biafra Blood, unmute.
Maz, Maz, your name is me now.
Ah, okay, ah, sorry, you know, see, you, you change your voice, why you come change this, but I've been, I've been, you change them to sleeping. She eat Akara today, she eat Akara today.
No, 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 it's me, it's me, I can't see, I still been there now.
Eh, eh, okay, no, no, I, I can hear very well now, so before, you know, eh, 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 as we be, we de look for anyhow, anywhere. So if we come here, sweet eh, voice, it eh, catch us immediately. Eh.
Oh, wow.
Okay, okay.
Well, there, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, please, let me.
Honorable Ke i de anima.
Mbo.
Honorable Ke imarama. Mm hmm. Onye chi me reze. Na ma na pu ri na ya. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Honorable Ke, udodrigi, I can shower.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Ke, and eh, let's use this opportunity to address something. At first, when you people came to announce that you are changing account and you want to be in control. You did not call P M name and put inside that first day. Mm hmm.
Uh huh.
Then the second day, when Ajare go live, after eh, this is, eh, what they can't do for the town hall meeting, don't bust. They now go and drag P M name, put inside. Mm hmm. Then, after the instruction was given since Monday, go and return everything back. And now, you are coming to say, oh, we can get meeting with eh, eh, A P M. A P M is not the one that you're having resolution, before you were using P M name to lie you. Then you now use eh, A P M name to say, A P M get meeting with us, then add the, of your right of concern at P M. Which people, which people are they deceive?
They will explain tire.
Hmm. How we they, how we they children, children reach where we no get sense? Say eh, say P M, we no, we no waiting in gate, could tell you say, go and destroy, go and destroy what you have. Then later, you can tell you say, come and build them back again. Hey! When, when he knows that it took him, he knows that it took him over three years to build what we are enjoying now. And then one day you go and destroy it in one day. Then how will you rebuild it back in another one day? Please.
Hmm.
You guys should disis from using P M's name to do lie, lie.
Abracadabra.
Abracadabra.
You funny.
Hmm?
My is funny. Um, Nanya lost her co-host.
Okay.
Could she get it back?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
You get it back without paying anything, sir.
Okay. Give her, give her.
Alright, so she's, she's saying to unmute her, please.
I will give her.
Yeah, because she lost her co-host.
Yeah, freedom for all. Over to you, pick the mic. Please, Bia France, disregard that thing that, the reason why we don't even want to talk about is because when we start talking about that thing they write and put in the media name, we are trying to validate them calling P M into that memo. So that's why we don't even want to start talking about it. It is so disheartening that you'll be doing something or dragging P M's name into it, someone that is in detention, standing trial. So you want to tell us that P M is inside detention making decision for you and telling you to go and do this and do this and do that. What are you telling Finland? What are you telling those that are trying him in court? You have already told Finland and court that P M is not the one taking decision for us. P M is not the one deciding anything in the government. P M is not the one commanding Bia France in the homeland or commanding defense. And then, yes, you're coming here to come and start talking account and then you drag his name and put inside. When everybody understands that without money, nothing can function in a government. And then you're coming to drag his name inside everything. When you people come and did it, you did not drag P M name put to, now that what I don't.
I did it secretly.
Now, when I want come drag P M name, come put inside in the mod.
No, um, um, Sunny, they think that if we hear P M said, we all uh run back. No, we ain't going nowhere. They, let them do them, let them go do them.
Yes.
Yeah. We there were going peacefully ahead. They decided to secretly.
America say if you do the crime, you do the time.
Oh.
And so now.
All right. Then go explain tire, then go explain, explain, no evidence.
That's, that's right.
Freedom. Hey, oh boy. August, I beg, um, I want, I want, I want to use this opportunity, take, um, you know, um, say my own concerning this, please. All the cabinet should make sure that all these coup plotters should not come back to this cabinet again.
He says.
This is one thing we are, we are, we are agitating.
Our bylaw said it in plain English. You don't need to call Google. You don't need to Google dictionary.
Exactly.
They keep fooling themselves.
This is what we have been, we have been, uh, you know, protesting uh in, in, in airspace. We don't want them back, please.
But of no confidence has already been conducted on them.
The bylaw have it clear and clean. They know what they're deceiving themselves.
So without being wasting time, I'm supporting this, um, uh, this beautiful occasion with Tati E Gemma.
Thank you, my dear Kenny.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, freedom for all. Uh, uh, so, uh, ma is the freedom for all.
Yeah.
You are from Sweden, right?
No, 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 I'm in UK, I'm not, I'm not anti Kiro no.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Freedom for. I may send, I may send the loan Kiro the, this thing because I don't believe he said that now, I, I chat him, I direct. So, and I asked him, what is he doing with the account, the new account? Are you sure that you are sleeping or you are drunk, that you don't know what is playing out with this new and old account? How can you, how can you of all people say that we should go and, anybody is free to go and put money in the older new account because that you don't want problem, that you want all the whole Bia France to, to participate in, in donating money. I now said that I will never, I will never put my money there. So this is where we are right now.
We, we having some adjustment with my, uh, from, uh, UK. UK family need to start working on getting a new uh, I mean, I mean admin for UK because we can operate uh in few days, uh, who have a decision to make on that. They will know.
Supported. They were, they were.
They were.
They were P M. They were our P M, our A P M. They were. All right, thank you.
All right, I don't know.
And then, please, before we continue, since, um, they are trying to destroy the brains of many people, it's good we always remind ourselves this. Hope everybody can see the screen.
Yes, so.
Everybody can see the screen, uh huh.
Hmm.
Yes, sir.
This is, um, the bylaws of this very government. And it is stated here very clear.
Bottom.
Uh huh. Um, when you're trying to talk about accountability, uh huh, it tells you department can be accountable to themselves within, uh huh, but it gives you here exceptionally issues related to Biafra Defense and Finance are classified.
Classified.
Fine.
So don't even come and start talking about it or discussing it or trying to change anything or say you want to be in account. Like, I don't know who says she want to be in account. Child.
Oh, my case is mayor.
Imagine, imagine you want to be in account. Somebody that took us to hundred years backward before.
Uh huh.
And one career was grow. So if you do any mistake, you do any mistake to say you want to go and start touching anything defense or account or to even discuss or to even double in, you are a big traitor to the government because you have destroyed the government classified informations. Yes, it is no-go area, no-go area. The only person that have to discuss or to go into those areas are the heads of government and whoever they appoint to go and check. But for you, we be like me, we are be ordinary ministers. I no be head of government. I no get power to go that side. I no go even until they send me message, say, go and look at something and come back. And when I go look at, waiting, they say make I check. I don't have the right to disclose it to go pop.
Or screenshot it.
Or screenshot it and take it.
Uh huh.
I, my, 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 my work was just go and look, look finish, come, just like our police will always say, me I go, me I look, me I come. Me I brain repair.
So, not say me I talk.
Uh huh. So, only that. So, Bia France, when they are using P M's name to write memo, draw their attention back to the laws that they enshrined. Ask them, when I no know this law, nope, you not enshrine this law. I be, it don't reach that thought now. When I use paper cover face, one wa kapas where uh Chief George day. Why? Not in this very Bia France, please.
Because they want to go to jail, that's why.
They, they, they all be law breakers. That's what, how you know Nigerianist, yeah, they don't respect the law. Nigeria, Nigerianists.
In Biafra, we teach respectful to them.
All right, we, we continue.
Minister Sunny.
Yes, Honorable.
Can I just make one little suggestion? You know, some people will like to talk. Uh, can we just tell them to mention their donation first? Before their long speeches, please.
Okay, yeah.
How much they want to donate?
Speeches tonight anyway.
Yeah, no long speeches tonight anyway. The police have reminded us. So please, let's go ahead. And for those recording to be able to get the records, so they want you to go to that one first before you continue saying something. Uh, Isakademikahiness, over to you, sir. Please, those that need camera, you can start your camera now. If you need camera, you can start your camera now. If you need camera, you can start your camera now. If you need camera, you can start your camera now.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, sir, Isakademikahiness, go ahead.
Yeah, welcome, Honorable Minister of Communication, Information and Digital Technology and all Bia France here present, A P M or cabinet members, Bia France. Um, there is no need for the spirit of preparation. I wanted to support this gathering with the pledge of the whipping sum of one hundred a gemma anacromi. It will be remitted by the month of July. How many days go from Kiruta? How many days, Okini? How many, how many, how many, how many? How many days go?
Only one, only one day.
One.
Only one day.
Only one day.
Alleluia, alleluia.
Amen.
Amen, amen.
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 Isakademikahnessi, I'm here. Chin, Chin, I want to move our lunch.
Thank you, mothers for the accolades. I want to tell you that your son, Akademikahness, is the most handsome son in the whole Europe.
He no qua. He no qua.
You got that right, you got that right.
He no qua.
Undecidable.
Come to play, I come, we honey.
Akademikahness.
You know what you say.
Have with you.
Thank you, eh, eh, eh.
Eh yo, eh yo, how come eh?
Thank you, thank you, thank.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you. We come to where we know what for. Where we know what for, over to you, where we know what for.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, our honorable information minister.
There was, sir.
Good evening, our people.
Good evening.
There was.
Good evening for the good work of your folks. This I will be donating the sum of three thousand in June.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I'm a Rama Kai, that's all, we wanna you. Ah, ah, ah. Thank you, brother, away.
There was.
Thank you.
What is this, sir?
Uh, Butchini, can I suggest something? Can we sing this Akamarama? It's beautiful and it's short. For everybody.
Yeah, okay. No, we can mix it up, we can spice it up. Okay, Udo.
Thank you. We come to Unkidu Number again. Over to you, sir.
Um, I want to, with Tene Gemma, I want to make, uh, correct something. Tene Gemma, please, plus thirty Gemma, that is forty Gemma. A brother come and say that, uh, we telling our cabinets not to allow these people. Please, Bia France, I want you to know that this is not the work of cabinets, it's work of you and I, okay?
Yes, so.
That, uh, this is not a thing, it's not a power cabinet. It's because of you and I, we stood firm. Okay, to stand with the law. It is our duty to defend our law and anybody that is found wanting, we were the one that will put fire on the nature of the cabinet to do the right thing. Please, this one, we did right in and let us come together, continue our law, do our bylaw, do our shata, please. This is our government and we are the one that will remove anybody who is not doing the right thing by getting the law, forcing the cabinet to do the right thing. Please, not their work, their work. That's why I have to remind you, thank you.
All right.
I go Kenny.
I agree.
Kowaka, kowaka, kowaka. Ma is include the number, I seen your T, Tene Gemma. Yeah, that's forty now.
Thirty is not forty.
Forty, yeah, okay.
Darlo. There was.
There won't could the number, thank you so much. Yes, so we appreciate all Bia France that have shown their resilience for a week now. This madness, this madness started since on, uh, Sunday. And today is another, so it's like a week now. Hmm.
Yes.
Week now, you don't want to return what they took from Bia France to where it was. Now, when I, when I get mine, when I wicked, now wicked.
I know.
Honest.
Uh, very, very wicked.
Now wicked.
And that's why we're gonna flush them down, down, down to the, to the drain where they belong.
Now wicked. Now no, they even.
Flush them down.
I no consider, say, we there, we there at war. Now wicked, now wicked.
Now through, now through.
You know how many thousands? Hmm, we've lost.
Okay, shall we move on?
Yes, sir. Over to you, sir. According to your.
Uh, all right, my, my minister of information. So, uh, the next item.
You have, you have one hand, you have one hand, you have one hand, I just came up.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
Wanda Makar, over to you.
Oh, two hands.
I help Bia France.
I help Bia France.
I help Bia France.
Oh, hey, this is Wanda Makar from Minnesota. God bless all of you guys.
Bless you.
Nice to you too. There was.
Thank you, thank you. I must, we must have to welcome our A P M to America and I say A P M, we welcome you. Um, here we're picking our, not color, but also Oji. For, for far, you know, here in Minnesota. Yeah, so Wanda Makar with hundred a gemma and Adajis was hundred a gemma, so which is two hundred a gemma from Minnesota. Um, God bless our A P M. Um, we don't care whether he speaks English right or not. You know, we don't want people that speak so well and they're just, you know, what we don't know. So we, we love our A P M the way he is. We don't care if he has, uh, if he's a professor or if he's a doctor, no, 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 no. We just love him the way he is. So our A P M, we support you. We're standing with you. We're gonna stand with you to the end.
Yes.
And Lord God Almighty will continue to bless you. We, 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 we trust you.
Yes, man.
We trust you. We trusted when we are working with our, uh, uh, Prime Minister. And there was no problem, not now, you know, we continue to trust you. So God will continue to bless you and all of you that are standing with our A P M. God bless you all.
And you too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, God bless.
They're saying the same thing about P M. So we, we, we are not, um, it doesn't.
I was just trying to call you.
All right, um.
I think they said four P M, so.
Wanda Makar, I'm here.
Thank you.
Wanda Makar, I'm here. Oh, that is.
Oh, you, oh you.
Thank you, thank you. God bless you, God bless.
There was.
Eh.
I can shower to you.
Eh.
Eh yo. So they know I say you like this my eh.
I don't go like a.
Eh, eh, eh. Eh.
Thank you, thank you.
There we go.
We come to our minister, Honorable Kelo, over to you, sir. That is the Honorable in charge of I O U. If you have any problem, call him, he will solve it for you in I O U. Thank you, sir.
Love. Eh, eh.
Eh. Eh, eh.
Thank you, Honorable. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, my A P M.
Do you need your WhatsApp, sir?
Their WhatsApp. Wel, wel, welcome, everybody. Um, sorry, I, I, I'm at, uh, you know, this is prime time for us. We are busy doing some work here, so.
All right.
Um, so I, I, I'll be quick. So, welcome you, everybody. Thank you very much. I enjoy the spirit there. You know, it's a spirit of camaraderie and bread and that's how it ought to be. So I, I am so glad. So, um, I'm welcoming our A P M. I mean, I'm taking a cola with fifty a gemma. And then one, I'll take a cola and alligator. I hope I'm not being greedy.
No, you're not. You're not enough.
Okay, all right. So and then, uh, welcome A P M with two hundred a gemma. So making a total of two fifty.
Again.
Thank you, I'm here.
So, my ref, my ref will confirm I already paid, so.
Yes, sir, you did.
Thank you, Honorable Kelo.
Thank you.
We pray that the Almighty will bless your pockets, what to, what to in Chukwaki Kabiyama. He say.
He said.
Ah, I'm a Rama Kai, guy. Honorable Kelo, Banyo.
I'll pay you.
Yes, so. Come on, I'm here.
Thank you.
There was, sir.
There was, sir, thank you.
There was, sir.
Now we there here.
Recall the number.
Okay.
I saw your question, but you teach also.
We come.
Okay, Honorable Sunny.
Yes.
So, um, our sister Amaka from Ohio, she has a message for you. She said for you to check your WhatsApp message.
Okay, WhatsApp, all right, I will check.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a ma'si on your Kelo. Papa Biafra, over.
Papa Biafra.
Uh huh. Papa Biafra, over to you.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There was.
There was.
Devo.
Very, very happy with you guys. I'm from South Africa. I like, um, this location and I have to support this, uh, this meeting as well. So, I will be breaking the, the cola for my APM, Pogajabu Nkere.
Hmm.
Uh, with the son of, uh, so I will pass the message to my admin.
What did he say? I didn't get the, the amount. I didn't get the figure.
Fifty-five eje ma.
Fifty-five, okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, Darlo.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Kanchawa, kanchawa, kanchawa.
Thank you. Please, uh, Amaka, Ohio. I hope, um, you have, um, communicated with your ref, uh, to know where to put in your request on the program. So, Honorable Chinny, please, communicate with her.
Right, sir.
Yeah, there is a music, uh, they say they have as a surprise for APM in Ohio, so communicate with them.
Okay.
You guys.
Okay, I will.
Yeah.
Please, um, one second, um, Honorable Noya, can you please take over the songs? Thank you. Okay. Let me call her.
Okay, Honorable Ref, over to you, sir.
Alright, uh, greetings, Biafrans, and welcome to this occasion once again. And, um, so at this time, I would like to formally, formally welcome our, our APM, His Excellency, Honorable Ogenkere and his entourage. And, um, as you know, uh, we have gone through the, the roller coaster in the past week and a half. And if you are familiar with, um, uh, sea vessels, if anybody who's been on a ship and been through a storm would know that when you come out of that storm, you are never the same. Uh, and, uh, for you to sustain, uh, to recover faster, you are advised to look in the horizon. The reason is that the horizon is always steady. So, if you're looking at the horizon, which, which is usually very far, um, i- i- it will tends to calm you down and bring you back to your senses. Uh, but if you continue to watch the water, the churning water, chances are that you'll still be confused. So, I liken the activities of these troublemakers we have, or we had in our midst, as the troubled waters. And instead of looking at them, remembering them, or trying to understand what they're doing and why, I would say, keep your eye on the rising sun, just like our PM always tells us. Keep your eye on the rising sun. And with that, I like to welcome His, uh, His, uh, uh, Excellency, uh, my APM, Honorable Ogenkere. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Emileke. And to bring APM up, we have to play this music to welcome him on board. Just a minute, please.
While we wait. Yes, I, I, I. Devo, sir. I, uh, I'd like to al- also ask everyone of us to remember the members of our BDF. They are near and dear to my heart for a special reason. Okay, so without them, there have been no us. There have been no Biafra. Alright, and thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Emileke. Thank you, thank you, Honorable Emileke. Alright, what are we waiting for? We are waiting for the music.
Yes.
Onuzo. Onuzo ke Biafra. Try. Eh. Onuzo. Onuzo. Onuzo ke Biafra. Onuzo ke Biafra. Onuzo. Onuzo. Onuzo ke Biafra. Onuzo ke Biafra. Again eh. Again eh. Onuzo. Onuzo. Onuzo ke Biafra. Onuzo. Eh. Onuzo ke Biafra. Onuzo ke Biafra.
Tell me what we do, everybody want to kill us. They want to take what belong to us. We the lover one neighbor, so we the lover ourselves too. So it is written in the holy book.
That's it. Onuzo. Eh. Onuzo ke Biafra. Onuzo ke Biafra. Eh. Onuzo. Onuzo ke Biafra. Onuzo ke Biafra. Onuzo.
Thank you, Honorable Minister of Information, Mazisoni Aporawo. Without you and your team at this appointed time or at this crucial time, we don't know what we are going to do. Well, thanks you for your service. On behalf of Biafran people, I'm saying thank you. You then kiss. Keep doing what you're doing. Keep doing what you know that is best for Biafra interest, not for your own interest, for Biafra. On behalf of first, we are all in this together. It's because of the love we have for our dear country, Biafra. Yesterday, we gathered, we spent over five hours. Here we go today again. This morning, before four AM, I'm already up, meeting after meeting, and I love it. I love my job, I love what I have signed for. It's voluntary. I'm not being paid, I haven't been paid a dime, just like some of us or all of us here. We are all volunteer army. And you can never defeat armies that volunteer to serve. That means whether they are paid or not, they will do the job because they are volunteers. They volunteer from the deep down inside their heart to do what they love. And there is a reason for that. Thank you. We remember our heroes, those before us, we appreciate their sacrifice. We salute them. They open our eye for us to see the reason why we should fight for freedom. We choose freedom rather than being slave. We choose light rather than darkness. We appreciate our leader, we call him Onyendu, who lead us till this day. We remember every pushing that he be pushing for years before they kidnapped him. It's the echo in our head. We still remember everything he said, that they are coming, that they are coming to overrun, to take over our land, that they are coming to Islamize us, that they are all over the bushes. Who are these people that our leader Mazinamdekan say they are coming? They are the Nigerian terrorist states that have colluded with the jihadis, Fulani's heads men. I call them blood-sucking demons. They have come. They are in our land today. We appreciate him and we appreciate the victory from Kenya court just because of how Africa is so corrupt. I don't know why it took Kenya over four years to come to this, uh, conclusion that is he is not guilty. All this political correctness, all of these African nations that have sowed their seed to the devil. That is the problem Africa have till today. That is the reason why Africa is the underdeveloped. They refuse to know their left and right. They refuse to love themselves. They refuse to walk in harmony and live in unity. This disunity of African people is a shame. You have the African union, they can't even question the European union. Why are they holding our Prime Minister Mazisamunewo? If our Prime Minister said he's fighting for his people, to free his people, then let's come to a round table and discuss. This African union refused to do that. What about our neighbor, sister countries that surround us, echo us? They also refuse to ask question. Why are they holding their beloved song, Mazisamunewo? They fail. Tomorrow, we want to blame the West. Every time, we want to blame the West, the West, the white people. It's not the white people's fault, it's our fault. Because we refuse to accept and take responsibility. We are living in denial. Why do we like to blame, 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 blame? You blame somebody of your mistake. This one way they come and colonize you, you go colonize them too. Because they live in unity, that's why they able to achieve that. Why we are here fighting ourselves? Our leader Mazinamdekan, what happened to Echoes? Why didn't them call the useless country Zulu, terrorist Nigeria and ask them questions? Why are they holding Mazinamdekan? This useless country.
I've been to Washington DC more than seventeen times or eighty times. I know what they want. I know the language they like to listen to, all the music they wanna hear. They hate weakness. They hate people that complain, complain, complaining, "They kill me, they kill you, they do this." Hey! For you to be accepted by the leader of the free world, you have to be strong. You have to convince them that, yeah, you can fight. You can defend your nation. Any country in the world before, NATO will accept any country. They go through it to make sure that this country can be able to fight alongside with them. If you are a weak country, they won't accept you. The mighty wanna go with those that are tough and strong. Because if they go with a weak nation, that nation in time of war will drive them back. The leader of the free world, they are watching our activities. They are watching everything we are doing. They are weighing in to see if we are ready. If we allow them, allow these terrorists come and kill us all over on our land, Washington will be laughing at us to say these people are not serious. Just because of what happened nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy, that alone is supposed to make us, turn us to a monster, brutal one for that matter. That alone is supposed to make us go angry. If we are good people, that alone is supposed to make us bad people to get our freedom. Your freedom will not be given to you. Your freedom will not be given to you. You take your freedom. Do you think the Nigerian terrorist state ready to dialogue with us? Our leader Mazin Namdikan was put there in the table, let's dialogue. Let's have a regional government. They turn it down. What happened in Aboriaa call? They turn it down. This useless shithole country not ready to let you go. And why you have British and some countries from Europe that have colluded with Nigeria just to make us dry? Do you think they want you to be free? What's wrong with us? What is our problem? Every village in Biafraland, one way or the other, is affected by the bad governance, governance of their useless country called Nigeria. And they have corrupt a lot of Biafran's mind. They have turned Biafran against Biafran. Is it not time? We fight this fight once and for all. I'm not here to fight this forever. I need my life back as well, just like you. I hardly have a sleep for four hours every day. As I'm speaking, there is serious war going on. Why do you think the shithole useless gutter media called CNN, why do you think they don't carry the news? Why do you think BBC, all these useless gutter media, why do you think they don't carry the news, what is happening in Biafraland today? Because they don't want the war to weigh in. They only wanna run to Gaza, cover how Gaza people been killed. What about Biafrans that have been killed? They only wanna run to Hezbollah, Yemen, Lebanon, cover all other news. Look at what is happening in Kenya a few days ago. It's all over the news. Don't you ask yourself question as a Biafran. Why are they not covering what is happening in Ehemufu? Why are they not covering what is happening in Eka? Why are they not covering what is happening in Alu? In Owere? Is it not time? We stop this madness and take our freedom? The world will not give us our freedom. Even the United States of America will not give us our freedom. What they will do is to support us. What they will do is to encourage and recognize us. They will not put their men, put boot on ground to fight you, fight for you. Imagine yourself as a man. You get married and you are asking God for fruit of the womb to have a child. Instead of you doing the needful with your loving lovely wife, you there expecting somebody else to do it for you. Is that not a shame? It's your job as a man to do what you're supposed to do so you can have baby. Do you wanna go to church and pray Monday to Monday? Do fasting and prayer Sunday to Sunday? Asking God for fruit of the womb? Why you as a man? You refuse to touch your wife. That miracle of Mary and Joseph, is that what you want? No one will give us our freedom. Chukwu Okikarabiamah, our God will only give us our freedom. When we work for it, when we ask for it, when we do what is right, he will support us. We don't wanna make our God a mockery one. Because when you don't do what is right, that means Obuchukwakikabiama, our creator that created us. He expect us to be free. He created us to be free. Our God did not create us to be slave. Biafrans, it's time we wake up. It's time we do what is right. It's time we fund our recognition and our diplomacy. And the government, in the de facto government in the homeland, keep doing what you're doing by funding your liberation. No one would do it for us. Even Jesus Christ, if you believe in him, they will not come and do it for us. Those traditionalist, habitist, I don't know where you are. Where you are without those, you're conjured or whatever, it's time you use it for action. All of you have disappeared. But if it is to use it to kill your own, all those nonsense will work. Why can't you use it and chase all this enemy from Ehemufu to Ekaka? If it is to use all that power to kill your own, that is when you will show how strong you are. And what about the clergyman? The pastors, the reverend? If we have hundred pastors, reverend, bishops in Biafraland, ninety-nine are false prophets, false bishop. They don't support our freedom. They have scammed us for too long. You donate, contribute money to them, they catapult your money abroad. How many of these congregation have used their churches or congregation to set Ehemufu village free? How many of them have used it to uplift the people of Biafran? How many of them have used it for a better life? How many of this congregation have used it to fight for our freedom? All they do is to scam our people that are suffering, finally difficult to have a three square meal a day. Fake bishop, fake pastors, baroses. I'm a Christian. I believe in God. I believe in Jesus Christ. But the Bible made it clear that a lot of these false prophet will come in the name of Jesus Christ. They will perform miracles, deceiving people. Why can't they use this their miracle to claim Biafraland? Baroses, saduses, fake pastors and reverends that have colluded with the Nigerian terrorists that have been paid to betray Biafran. Some of these co-called pastors, reverends, use their churches during their election to campaigns for some candidate. Because they have sold their soul to the devil. If you're a Biafran, you are not putting your money, where your money will give you freedom, freedom, free. You're free from this useless shithole, Sodom and Gomorrah country that deserve to be born to ashes. We hate country. Country without a hate with passion. Country that kill its own. We found ourselves in Nigeria for over hundred years. We can boast of steady electricity. I'm talking about electric light, we can boast of it. A country without a sewer system. A country without good infrastructure. A country without good education system. A country that the president was sick, we flew abroad. Oh my God, how did we get here? Biafrans, what's wrong with us? If Nigeria has a country over two hundred million, if they can have good hospital, what else? That'll tell you this country is a shithole country. Then when the president gets sick, president will flew abroad to country like America, India or wherever to receive treatment. That tells you that their country called Nigeria can't even have good hospitals. Useless shithole gutter country. Everything in Nigeria is scam. Former president called Gulag Jonathan. He said Nigeria is never a country. It's mere geographical expression. That the people are not even making it to work. If a Eurobama is a president, the North will say no. They're not gonna take it. If it happen that a Biafran man is a president, which they never allow us to be, the North and the Eurobamas will say no. They never agree. We are not one people. You go to the North, they speak different language. You come to Biafraland, we speak different language. You go to the North, they eat different food. Biafraland, we eat different food. You go to the North, they are Muslim. Biafraland, we are Christian. You go to the North, they have terrorists. Hezbollah, Boko Haram, Okaida and all of them. Sponsored by Iran, the head of the snake. That's why Tehran is born. You come to Biafraland, we are Christians, practice Judaism and tradition worshippers. We are different people. We Biafrans try to coexist, it didn't work. We Biafran people demonstrate how to live and let live. That is why anywhere that you go in that country before we exist, exit out of it, you will see a Biafran, every community, both in the North, South, Southwest. You see a Biafran doing business, but it didn't work. If you're a Biafran, you're not supporting to free your people, shame on to you. Your people have been massacred by the hand of Nigerian military and the terrorist Fulani Hezbollah, Boko Haram, Okaida and others. Our people are being chased into IDP camp. As I'm speaking today. While they are killing us, we are killing them, it's a war. It breaks our heart to hear when any of us is done. For us to win this war, we need to support our freedom. We need to do the needful, if not, they will kill us all. Please, I beg every Biafran. Put your AJ, your money, where your money will save your life. We save Biafraland. Don't put your money, where your money will be sent to kill us. They kidnap our leader Mazin Namdikan just to stop me and you from being free. Just to stop us fighting for freedom. They call our Prime Minister Mazie Simonewa for so-called questioning, questioning. Just to delay by time to see if they can destroy us. After, we are in a path to defeat some of the mole, the saboteurs that have been planted in our midst. Ngozi and her groups now left and form a paraly government to destroy what we are doing. Please, if you stay in this movement with us, don't be Ngozi Path Two. Share your sword and fight our enemy. Don't fight those that God have ordained to pilot this affair. Don't fight him who is doing the needful for his people. Don't fight to destroy what we have all worked hard for for years. Some are being used directly or indirectly. Some know what they are doing. Some don't. Some are doing it because of their person again, because of what they wanna achieve. Please, share your sword and don't do it because of your person again. Do it for Biafran. Don't do it for me. You might not like me. You might not like the way I speak the English, maybe that's not how you speak. You might not like the way I whine or bang my mouth. If you don't like me as a person, like this word, B-I-A-F-R-A. Like Biafran and do it for Biafran. And it's all about Biafran. It's not all about me. It's not all about Mazie Simonewa, I call him my boss. It's not all about our leader Mazin Namdikan. It's not all about you. It's about Biafran. Biafran people are estimated over eighty million. If we let them kill us all, eighty million will disappear. But if we save our land, eighty million in years to come, we turn to hundred billion, two hundred billion, three hundred million. We multiply. We have generations. We have children. And our children will be proud of me and you. They will sing praises about us. Let us all come together and save our land. Those that don't hate, that hate me, don't hate me, don't even love me. Love what I represent. I'm a son of Biafran. And I'm fighting for Biafran. I'm not fighting for myself. Biafran first. Don't crucify me if I don't do nothing wrong. Don't blackmail me. Don't lie against me. And don't lie against every Biafran and the pioneers of the great movement. What goes around comes around. If your hands are not clean, be rest assured, you will pay for it. If not now, very soon. If your hands are not clean, the land of Biafran will reject you, reject everything about you. The land of Biafran will never bless you. Everything will work against you. If your hands are clean, you will receive blessing abundantly. Blessing that give peace of mind, joy. There's one time, one of the media broadcaster, journalist, content creator, independent media came in one of our gathering and pleaded to me, Mazyogechukunkir, that I should forgive her for all her sins, every evil thing she have done, how she have tried to destroy my name, blackmail me. She even sang a song that's echo like a love song. I don't know where that is coming from. Said, please, you forgive me, forgive that. How far? One I did not forgive. I said, it's a gradual process. The same person have start again. Can't we learn from all this lesson? Touch not my anointed. Touch not him who is sent to do the job. You can't bring us down. You can't bring our leader Mazin Namdikan down. You can't bring our Prime Minister Mazie Simonewa down. You cannot break me down. I represent Biafran. And the land of Biafran and the people of Biafran will protect me. They will fight with me. Also, I appreciate my fellow citizens, how they have demonstrate the love they have for me and the entire Biafran, that we are all in this together. We all fight, fight together. I want all of us to emulate United States of America. A great country, a leader of the free world that I love so much. I'm proud to be American. And I'm proud to be a Biafran. When America lead the war, who know? America fight like a lion. They don't fight with weakness. They achieve what they want with strength. They go hard. Biafran is time, we go hard. We can't accept all this bullying. We can't accept all this weakness anymore. We can't accept to say we are going to Russia to come and help us, help who? Are we all that weak? The days have gone. When we say if United States of America don't come to liberate our land or free us, we can be free. We can be free, we can fight. We can fight. When they see us doing what is right, they will come and support us. If we fold our hand, saying Russia, Russia, come save our eyes. America, America, please, they are killing us. The Fulanis are here. The White House will be laughing at us. They hate weak people. They want you to be strong. That is why America build their economy in a way that you can't destroy. If you live in this great country, you wanna enjoy this great country, you work hard. Some have two, three, four jobs to live how they want, how you want. You put your place. Do you wanna be at the middle? Do you wanna be at the top class? Do you wanna be poor? You choose what you want. We Biafrans choose freedom. And for us to achieve our freedom, we achieve it with strength, not by talking. We achieve it by cleansing our land. When our leader Mazin Namdikan said, Biafran land must be peaceful. If you fold your hand and keep preaching peaceful, from maybe Ibuka church to Mbaka church to all the other churches, say Chukunna, God in heaven, we need peace in Biafran land. You the God that creates the whole heaven, Jesus Christ can't give us peace. That means we don't know what, we are so ignorant of how the world work. You can achieve that peace by chasing these enemies out of our land. If a criminal breaking your door to rob you, what do you do? Do you welcome that armed robber or that criminal? You welcome that criminal, offer that criminal coffee? Or do you chase that criminal out? Or do you deal with that criminal? We cannot condone this nonsense anymore. It's time we chase these terrorists out of our land. It's time we let them know they cannot defeat us. Biafran land can never be Islamized. We are sending this warning to all the Emirate Caliphate that have colluded with the head of this snake from Tehran or headquarters of Iran that are sponsoring Boko Haram in Nigeria to kill us, that are sponsoring Hezbollah, Okaida, Ayswap and others, that are sponsoring this Islamist jihadist terrorist to come and Islamize us. You all combined can never, never defeat us. Biafran land can never be Islamized. We will not retreat or surrender. Our land is God-given land that he gave to us. We will fight to protect our land. We will fight to protect our women and children. And for all you saboteurs, both in within and outside, all of you behold, we behold a country. Disease from your evil plot. Disease from your evil way. We are not joking. For over twenty years, we have been taken for right. This time around, everyone will behold a country. It don't matter who you are. It don't matter if it is me. If your hands are not clean, you are doing what is wrong, you will be as pause. At that time, you will be heard a country. It applies to me as well. All the plotters, cool plotters, evil people, that wanna destroy what we are doing, you know yourself. Disease from it. I had a meeting yesterday. So with some of the pioneers of this great movement. And they came out to lie against me for something I never agree upon. Shame, shame to those individual. Why will you all do such a thing? To lie against somebody who never agree on something? Shame unto you. Disease from your evil way. Biafras, please. There is a breaking news here, I just wanna share with all of us. Something that make us unique in what we are doing. The little ajema that we are all supporting with, from the bottom of our heart, that actually encourages us, that we are participating in this process. Just imagine, if we have money, if we have ajema as we want, and we don't have all this gathering like this gathering today and the one of yesterday. No one or nobody will even know who you are. If we have had millions, billions and trillions, and we, you know, that's what we use to do what we are doing, nobody probably gonna know who is Sister Love. Nobody probably gonna know who is Minister Yunes. Or Deputy Chi, Chiñi. Or Rep Eminike. All this, what we are doing, all this gathering is a blessing. It bring us together, that's how we able to know those pioneers, those that are really supporting our freedom, those that want their presence to be known. It's a blessing when you come and sow a seed in Biafra restoration. It's a blessing when you gather together in this Nuzukomuna. It's a blessing. Just imagine tomorrow, we have Biafras millionias and billionias, and they come and take over our, the responsibility in protecting our land. All this gathering, probably, we stop. We might gather one way or the other way, but this gathering give us opportunity to show appreciation, to support what we are doing, is a blessing. That tells you, it don't matter how rich you are. Whether you are rich or poor, you can support your freedom. Whether you are rich or poor, your voice can be heard. Whether you are rich or poor, you can also be part of those that liberates this great country. Biafra. Thank you from here, I appreciate everyone. Please, every evil individual, whether you are part of the pioneers of this great movement, disease from it, it won't take you nowhere, and you can win this fight. I bet you, you can't. You can gang up anyhow, you and your group, I will destroy all of you. I will come with truth and genuity. And the gods of our land, our creator, will protect me, you can't do nothing. And let the rest assure, our land must totally be liberated, and the recognition that we seek, we will get it. We are getting closer. Very soon, we have a breaking news. And also wanna remind you all, just two days ago, the great country, United States of America, led by his excellency President J. Trump, he mentioned and talk about Somalia land. They are seriously weighing in to recognize Somalia land. Maybe after Somalia land, Biafra, or it can happen at the same time. We are glad with our alliance with Ambazonia and the Eratras, Somalia land will be next. And we all be recognized because we are fighting a just cause for freedom. Thank you from here, nde wu.
Nde wu.
Nde wu, thank you, APM.
Nde wu, our APM.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Gyo.
Nde wu.
APMi, danyi ma. APMi marama. Namada purina ya. Dejé, 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 agunwoko. The Lord is with you, okay? And the gods of Biafra is right around you, and behind you, before you, every day, every second, every hour.
I just wanna use the opportunity to let, to let Biafras know, until I give a go ahead order, we can also, uh, before we resume back to the website. But if the instructions are not taken, we might take the next step. We might start holding people accountable, please.
Support they do.
Whatever it is, I encourage every Biafra to do what is right. As I'm speaking, there's serious who are going in Biafra land. They are killing us, we are killing them. It hurts when any of our own go down. We can stop this, we can prevent this. Accountable, I've been talking about that for the past two weeks. Please, no one is exempted of that, even me. The website of Biafra cannot be hijacked. We must surely recover it, we must surely get it back. And if it is in a peaceful way, we will, if we have to enforce it, we will, nde wu.
Definitely.
Nde wu.
Thank you, sir.
Nde wu.
Nde wu.
Evil people, we are war, and they are hijacking our, our accounts.
Thank you, APM, thank you, APM. We call on honorable love, your hand is up.
Yes, so, yes, so me put my hand up, proper, proper. Hmm, APM, nde wu. Hmm, one of my members, he is at work. But she just send me a message. He said she is working, but she is listening to APM with one ear. And she love what she is hearing, so she is supporting APM's speech with hundred ajema.
Wow, wow, wow.
Wow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Me not done yet too.
Awe.
Uh huh, me not done yet, uh huh. So, me, we sit down here, they listen, me like it too. Hmm hmm. So me say, APM, thank you for your speech with thirty ajema. So that brings New York to one thousand seven hundred and thirty.
Anagwa kwa ke ba.
Oh, my goodness. You are so much.
Thank you, my people.
Honorable love, who, what's the name of the person, the, your, one of your members?
Etel.
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 Oh, Etel.
Okay.
Thank you.
May God bless you. Very respectful, Adabiafra.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ezia da Etel.
Thank you. Inma, over to you.
Okay, nde wu no, nde wu no.
Nde wu.
Nde wu.
Uh, from me, on behalf of Michigan, Mandelekwe, Mandelekwe, we are doing hundred and twenty-five.
Thank you, thank you.
My love, my love. Honorable. My danyi ma.
Thank you.
How, how much was it he gave, please?
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five, alright, thank you.
Read me eleven, over to you. Read me eleven, over to you. Read me eleven while you get ready, honorable Meshe, over to you.
Okay.
Nde wu no, omo nemo. Good day.
Nde wu.
About, about what to do, because I animal, animal transit since yesterday. I can be joining, when I join from, but I think we're making a telegram. So, I could call my APM crew this evening, this morning, sorry. And do be my brother, very, very happy on this. Here my order now, new life a bamboo, I can look in here game eh. But they will not win this fight. Here our fights, and we win it to the glory of God. Biafra, Biafra, muchineke. I am more, onisa lamba no.
Hmm.
And the, which one no more, I know Vietnam, na nyame, na nyame, ano nyamono. I can meet you, send ajema as support on here on the name eh. Kachuku gozi ono.
Thank you. One night, Nde wu. Thank you. Ready me, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Akama rama, kani gakoro. One night, you ready me oh.
Thank you.
Yes.
Honorable Meshe, over to you.
Alright, uh, so I just have a team update from Texas. I have Mazzy Damien, uh, fifty ajema, uh, Mazzy Zai, uh, ten ajema, uh, Mazzy Orago, twenty-five ajema, and the Nukwada, uh, Chinira Munake, a hundred ajema, so bringing Texas to six hundred and fifteen ajema, nde wu.
Uh oh. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Akama rama, kani gakoro, ndi Texas banjo.
Thank you.
Hallelujah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Texas.
Thank you, Texas.
Texas, nde bye.
Thank you, Texas, Mighty Dog, over to you.
Yeah, greetings, Ipo.
Over on the unfair, the condo.
The condo, uh, greetings, our APM, um, greetings, all Biafran cabinet members here, and Biafrans in general. Um, wanted to pick a caller not with fifty ajema, and, um, and today's little contribution, hundred ajema, making it one fifty. And I also want to use this opportunity, please, to appeal to you, our information minister, to talk to the people on space, let nobody that are falling out of this struggle come back again. Because that's the avenue they always coming with. They will come in and join the Twitter, and we start wasting our time and debating with them. This is not time to convince anybody anymore, if you fall out, you fall out. Nobody should be welcome on Twitter space, nobody should be welcome on our phone raising. If they wanna donate, they go straight to the web today, where they have to make donation. We have to stop all this and move forward, thank you. And also, um, please, the, this is, is a, the zeal, is it? Biafra.gov.org@gmail, right?
Okay, uh, Mighty Dog, I'm gonna send you, send me a message, okay? I will send, I will send it to you.
Okay, I already made some payments, I just wanted to confirm. I already made some payment here.
Yeah, Gmail. Message is correct, Gmail is correct.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, thank you so much.
Mighty Dog.
Akama rama, kani gakoro, Mighty Dog to banjo. Hey, wo, dalusa.
Thank you, thank you. Honorable Ota, over to you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, thank you. I was welcomed by the thunderous voice of our APM. And I'm very happy to hear his voice, and for him to tell us the situation of things that is happening. I can't imagine how adults would just come out and be lying. Why should people be doing that? Why should they be secreting, uh, lies? Well, uh, APM, want to let you know that we are solidly behind you. Aludon State is solidly behind you, no matter what is happening. So, no matter they, whatever they want to do, let them keep on doing it. But at the end of the day, Biafran must surely come, and when it comes, all those people will be taking, they will give account of all they have done. This, this is the highest sabotage that we have ever seen. They want to, they want to close where, um, things go to our men. But God, God, God pass all of them.
Yes.
They will never succeed. They had opportunity, when they went to Finland, to go and, to make, uh, PM, to make everybody understand that Ngozi is not working for, uh, for him. Instead, they leave what they are supposed to do, and start shaking, checking, um, just in shadow. We never knew that they have another plan.
Hmm.
Well, God pass them.
Yes, sir.
Uh, on this note, I want to, um, on behalf of Aludon, I want to donate the sum of twenty thousand ajema.
Wow.
Wow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We have, um, five thousand ajema.
Twenty thousand.
What, I'm sorry?
Twenty thousand ajema.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Thank you, we have update of five thousand ajema from Tuthos. She said she is supporting, on behalf of a Italian state, five thousand ajema.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tuthos. Thank you, Tuthos.
Honorable Minister of Information, sorry to interrupt. You see, when an enemy come, you can see when they come, you don't see them going back.
Yes, sir.
If it is not through graphic, just show a little bit of when they were coming.
Yeah.
And what happened.
Let's see what.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
You say, whato, whato.
Hey, hey, hey.
Whato, whato, Promax, we are winning. Hmm, okay, kelle drake.
This is when they came, oh, let's refresh. Internet, no one make we see, uh, eh, eh, eh. Eh.
You know, if you have a lot of things on the.
Computer, now, have we?
Too many screens open.
Yes.
You close some.
Anyway, we'll come back to that as we continue. Uh, name eh.
I love everybody's voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, so we have not sang for our sister, um, Tuto. Oh, okay. Thank you, Tuto. Thank you, Tuto.
Tutoz.
Diana.
Okay, Tutoz, Diana, Diana, thank you, mercereo.
Mercere.
Thank you guys.
Okay, I think, uh, it's blank now, so let's fly. So Biafrans saw when they came, but, um, how did they go back? Now, Gune were nine, nine, nine explain.
Back.
There are more cars that came, there are more cars that came, you saw them when they came. How did they go back? Obunigwe explained.
Obunigwe sent them back.
In pieces.
Yes, so thank God our men on ground, oh, it's well with them.
Thank you. Alright, uh, we have a Sunday of way.
Sunday of, of way.
Good evening.
I salute everyone in the house.
There were.
Uh, go for more. Since all this why you don't know my name, this is Sunday of way.
I know Sam was, sorry, I forget, I'm sorry.
So I want to use this opportunity to tell everyone, thank you for standing in the right position. Want to thank everyone and I want to thank our A P M. Where our A P M go, that we have go. Uh, every day I used to go attack all these horrible full of new members. They are calling ourselves, uh, Ada, Ada the orange, Abi Adar the orange. Before I used to call them, but now anytime I called them, they don't hit my call. Because since all this why, ah, I'm going war with them. I'm knowing good time with them. I want to tell everyone, thank you. I want to use ten thousand AJ to support our A P M speech. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Sunday.
Oh, wow.
There were. Akama Rama Kaniga Koro Brothers Sunday Lee. I can chowawo.
Thank you, thank you.
Honorable Chinny.
Thank you.
Honorable Chinny, uh, I didn't get, uh, Diana's, uh, own. Five thousand AJ. Uh-huh, thank you so much.
Okay, on our program now, Honorable America, um, I crave your indulgence. I crave your indulgence that, um, um, Ohio have a surprise for A P M, so I crave your indulgence as I will bring up, um, Ohio admin now. Ohio admin. Ohio admin, Amaka, are you here?
Yes.
Is she?
Um.
Just talk to her.
We may have to mute her.
Yeah, she should raise her hand, please, I can't find her.
Okay, Amaka, raise your hand, please.
Amaka, please raise your hand. Amaka, are you here? Amaka, raise your hand. Are you in? Amaka, Ohio admin. Amaka, Ohio.
Okay, we got it. We have a hand up.
Okay, Chukudi, Chukudi, go ahead. Chukudi, go ahead. Okay, Chukudi, okay, Amaka is there. Chukudi, go ahead, unmute yourself, Chukudi. Chukudi, unmute yourself. Chukudi is not ready, okay, Amaga, go ahead, unmute yourself, okay, Chukudi, you can go, Chukudi.
Am I coming out?
Yes, we can hear you now, go ahead.
First and foremost, I give God Almighty thanks. Secondly, Maazi Sonne, I want to specifically thank God on your head. Thirdly, I thank God for our A P M. And for all the, the new Biafrans that are standing strong at a time like this. The Lord Almighty will bless us all in Jesus' name.
Mhm.
I'm using this opportunity to pray one prayer, please permit me to do it. Please, I'm taking permission from you, uh, people. In the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Our Father and our God. He who is God all by himself. Lord, one thing I know about you is that you never start a journey and stop it halfway. You always complete your journey. Not minding what it takes. Glory to you because I know you will complete this journey you have started. Again, I thank you most high God for giving us men that is standing strong. May your mighty hand, oh God, always be with your children.
Mhm.
May you never allow them to go down. Our A P M, may you never allow him to go down.
Amen.
In the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen.
Our information minister, Maazi Sonne. A man who always stands by the truth. May you never allow him to go down, oh God. And I stand by your word in the book of Psalm, chapter ninety-one, verse one. Lord, I pray that you hide them in your secret place.
Hmm.
Hide them, oh Lord, in your secret place. We are the eyes of the evil one, we not see them. We are their evil hand and their evil arrow and their evil plan will not touch them. In the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
And I pray that standing on the same word of yours in verse eleven. Lord, I ask that your mighty angel will always guide them.
Hmm.
That no evil stone of the enemy will touch their life.
Amen.
In the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Lord in verse. Fourteen, because you said, oh God, because they know you, because they recognize you as the Almighty, you said that you crown them with long life. Lord, you will crown them with salvation. Heavenly Father, may your mighty hand, oh Lord God, be upon them, give them long life. That this battle they are fighting day and night, oh God. Victory is theirs and at the end with long life, they will enjoy it.
Amen.
In the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Oh God, that have been in because of this cause. I know that you will not abandon them, oh God, I know you have never abandoned them. I ask that your strength will be with them always. I ask that your mighty hand will be with them always. I ask at the time, standing anywhere to talk, oh God, may your wisdom fill them. Jesus, I remember your word to say that we should not panic, oh God, on what we are going to say. That at every given time, your spirit will give us what to say. Father, anytime they open their mouth to talk, may the spirit of the Lord talk through them. In the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Mighty man. And I stand again on your word in Isaiah, chapter forty-one. Lord, verse twelve, verse eleven and twelve. Father, you said that all those that are fighting against us, all those that are fighting against or that we look for them, we not see them. You said that they will be like non-existent things. As men that have reason to fight against this just cause. Against this battle you are doing, you are fighting for us, oh God. May they be like non-existent things.
Yes.
Lord, wherever they are, may they become non-existent things.
Amen.
As men that want to bring this journey down, may they become non-existent things. In the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
And in verse thirteen, oh God, your word to say that you will help us. Mighty God, our trust is in you, you are, you have been the one that is helping us. I ask you, oh Lord God Almighty, at a time like this, may we never lack help from you. Keep helping us at the end, oh, we will turn all the glory unto you. In the name of Jesus Christ.
Insane.
Father, I ask, oh God, Lord Almighty. At a time like this, in the book of John, chapter two, Lord, verse three and four. And when thy mother come unto thee and said, they have no more wine. Lord, you said in verse four, why do you involve me, woman? And she went out without uttering a word unto you. But the end result is that there is surplus of wine. Father, at a time like this, we asking, oh, we involve you and we ask, let there be more wine in our life, in our count. Lord, let there be more wine, as you are waking us up, oh God, the new one. Father, up now, I pray that they will bring more wine in our count. In the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Thank you, mighty. Heavenly Father, keep sustaining this, your children that you are using to fight this battle for us.
Amen.
Jesus, I pray.
Amen, amen.
I'm dropping off this mind, please, no matter how small, please, from my, from the heart of my heart. I'm supporting this call with five AJ, five thousand AJ. Please, Maazi Sonne, I will send the message on Telegram so that you give me Lagos Lazina account, where I will drop it.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much, we love your prayers. God bless you.
Thank you, thank you. Amaka, over to you.
There were no more Biafran.
There were.
Sonny, give me my song.
Okay. Hey, 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 hey.
He's there, that Amaka is on fire now, let's see her.
Oh my God, I'm not on fire, please, I think I'm trying to do what something, I have no idea. But we have to move on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, here we go. Here we go.
Oh my god, our, our A P M is so hungry oh. Where are our people? Come on, come on, come on, shake your body. Please close by.
Pepe soup not be the one, we better need to perceive Wakapa so.
I know, this is a special one. For our Abo A P M. Ay, Odogo. It's not easy oh. Hi.
This is.
Akane, yo, ye nonso, ye nonso.
Perceive and carry, not be perceive and Wakapa, perceive and carry. The aroma is so, so good.
Hey, this thing is, is, is on Abo.
Don't worry, we there, now we there here be.
I want A P M to test it, please.
Hey. Honorable Sonny, can you put some music on so that um we're gonna be perceiving and dancing at the same time while we wait for our uh, our helpers.
Yes.
Because we're looking for who's gonna bail the cards right now.
Let's go back there.
Who will bail the card?
The music to keep the house on well.
On ye nonso.
Yes, honorable Betty, your hand is up. Honorable Betty.
To send something for you to container. To, to A P M. Is a. I would give, uh, A T A.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, thank. Thank you.
So much. Sorry, I'm sorry, I was on the phone, who just submitted now?
Honorable Betty.
Honorable Betty, can anyone, ay. You can go on ye.
A T A J M.
That's it, ma. Thank you.
Can you go to honorable Betty, Betty, eh? Honorable Betty, anye kelegyo. Honorable Betty, marama. Thank you, honorable Betty.
Thank you. Thank you Betty, we come to Jack, Jack, your hand is up, unmute yourself.
Uh, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, can hear you, go ahead.
I'm a minister, I greet A P M. And all the cabinet members and the and my fellow Bia France. Um, I will support our sister with thirty A J M. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, honorable.
Mazie Jack, thank you sir.
Mazie Jack, thank you. Akamarama kaiga kuru, Mazie Jack today.
Yes, so.
Thank you.
We will Mazie Jack.
Thank you. As honorable Chinay, over to you, your hand is up.
Alright, okay. My people, my people, how na day, eh?
Now we there here.
I give salutes, okay, to my wonderful A P M. And every honorable members here. Uh, all genuine Bia France. Our men, our angels on ground, our V D F. And I thank God for our leaders. O Hamadike Masunambe Kano and his son. Our P M Obatobi Masu Simon Eba. All our wonderful donors. Monday came here yesterday, Monday came here today, we say thank you.
Yes.
And all those who are willing to donate but for some reasons they do not have enough to do so. I pray that to K K, we bless you all. You know, we are going home. And nothing can distract us, okay? So, thank you so much. Um, I have an update from our dear, um, Mazie James. And he said he wants to help out with, uh, transporting the pepper soup to our A P M. With a whopping sum of seventy A J M. Konaka, konaka, konaka.
Thank you.
Mazie James, thank you so much. Thank our, our own Mazie James, you know, for his wonderful contribution. And I'm calling on Sister Honorable Noya, are you there? You can sing.
Yes, I'm here.
Alright, please sing.
Akamarama kaiga kuru Mazie James.
Thank you very much. They will, they will. For that wonderful rendition. So, right, we're still waiting for hands up, on ye nonso. Now who there here, come on. The remaining smaller. Thank you so much guys, God bless you.
So. Can you hear me guys?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, as we are waiting for people that will help me, I am begging. Um, Amaka is begging, please. I need my A P M to test this pepper soup, it's very, very wonderful. Um. The guy in Ache. One of my people from Ohio, Chineme, Ohio. He's supporting us with hundred A J M.
Wow.
Wow.
Thank you. Our brother Chineme, Ohio, thank you so much. Honorable Noyanwano, Noyonu.
Wait.
Wait, that's wait.
Wait, wait, yeah.
Yeah, uh, and, uh, I know. Uh, one of my sons. He's supporting with ten A J M. Which is, uh, his name is Tony C. He's giving us, uh, ten A J M. So.
Wow.
We have two hundred before, plus hundred, uh, A J M plus ten A J M. Uh, we, Ohio is now giving a three hundred and ten A J M. Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Akamarama kaiga kuru munani nono, Ohio. They will, they will. Thanks. We move. We move. Okay, let me put down my hand. Hands up, hands up, on ye nonso, who's gonna bail the cards? That's right, we almost there. Mister Amaka, is the thing still hot?
Of course, hey. Do you think?
Oh yeah, protect it or put it in the cooler.
When it is hot. It's okay. And animals gave two, twenty A J. To transport the pepper soup.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let everybody go, everybody wash hand and join me, let's eat this food.
Uh, uh, A P M is, is there already, Orutego?
I'll prepare this, right?
A P M, no one eat a meloni, what make everybody join? Anyway.
Can I give my updates quick, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Alright, uh, Sister Amaka?
Yes, Mama.
So, I got one more. Someone that needs to help out, okay? And that is Sister Lydia Okore. You know, she said, um, she needs to help out with this, um, Nkobi. And pepper soup to get to A P M as soon as possible, so. She's helping us with one hundred A J M.
Oh, thank.
Wow. I, I agree, eh? Honorable Noya, are you still there?
I am here, I'm here. Akamarama kaiga kuru.
Yeah. Thank you, Sister Lydia.
Thank you, thank you.
Mister Nonye Biko, uh, what, how much did, uh, Amaka, uh, said like?
Amak, Amaka.
So, I said.
Amaka's son, Amaka's son, uh, ten A J M. Chineme, one hundred A J M.
Yeah, Amaka, this is Tony C, please, please put his name, Tony C.
Oh, okay. Tony.
I call him my son because he's just a young, a young person that came. He just came newly, uh, at, uh, in Ohio.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much.
So he like what we are doing.
Okay.
Alright, we have a warmer, a warmer, over to you, unmute yourself.
Uh, thank you, honorable, um, Sonia Forawa. Good evening, uh, A P M, so sorry, um, the cabinet, good evening everyone. Um. The Lord is your strength, okay? Nothing, nothing will happen to you, we are all praying for you. Um, I just do, I just woke up now, um, I'm going to support with fifty A J M. And then that, yeah, that will be sorted out within the week hopefully. So that, uh, you know, we, we, we are used to the other website. You know, but this new one. I will try and sort it out within the week, okay?
Thank you.
Alright then, yeah, thanks, um, God bless.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sister. Akamarama kaiga kuru wana yo.
So sorry, is Sister Noyan? I got what I give boot oh, I got what I give boot. Put volume more, if not, I am, I am baggy penalty. Please oh.
How much is that, fifty?
I go like a sister, a warmer yearing.
Fifty.
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 Fifty. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
We have already gotten a six hundred and fifty A J M.
Wow.
Yeah, so we have two sixty, we have two sixty left. Oh my god. Uh, yeah, is it two fifty?
Two sixty left.
We have six fifty here, I think we still have three fifty left.
Who has it, who has the accurate account?
Um.
Well, I've been following it, I have two sixty left.
Our, our rep started it, so from my own end. Give me one second, let me see, because I've been on the phone contacting people.
Now this thing could make some accountant here collect suspension or?
Six fifty, the amount collected is six fifty. Hmm, okay.
Okay, I'm correct, six fifty.
Six fifty.
Okay. Okay, alrighty, our rep, your hand is up, sir, honorable Melike.
Yes, yes, Virginia has an update.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Virginia.
No, you missed something.
Virginia will be contributing another two hundred A J M to make it eight hundred A J M altogether.
Hi.
Wow, thank you.
Wow. On ye nonso, kuwana, kuwana.
Thank you, my rep, thank you so much.
Alright, Sister Noyanwano. Akamarama kaiga kuru, Honorable Melike. Hallelujah, we move.
They will.
Daluno, hey. Now, uh, Bia France, I wonderful, we love you guys.
They will.
Daluno.
They will.
Honorable Chinay, oh, what two hundred, on ye, right? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Bia France, you see me, I have a little, we, we still have, uh, three fifty. So that I can put this thing on, in the flight this night. Before, we didn't want our white, we get our A P M, please.
Hmm.
It will get there.
Eko.
Eko repe so kwa neko transportation, ah, wow, that two hundred is so kwa la transportation.
No, sorrow.
Okay.
Sure, I'm, I'm not, um, I didn't add it.
Okay oh.
Kamakama. Boku ni kane bo, ome ni kane muji ya. Boku ni kane gune loa, owa oachi oh. One kuchi yozoba muteweyoson, tokola kadi.
Akawo la yo pati pe, otofu ya.
Oneye ne shiri ke noa, okechi neke kamau. Oneye na ra ra ra.
Oh, you're na la ra, oh, noa, oh, get chi neleme, kama, oh. Kau chi nelemo. M'k'chi nelemo. Kama.
Don't, I'm not for the, oh.
Oh, get chi. Oh, get chi. Kama, oh. Oh, get chi. Oh, get chi. Oh, get chi.
Oh, get chi, oh, 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 oh.
Get chi nelemo.
Oh, 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 oh.
Get chi nelemo. Get chi neke. Get chi nelemo. Get chi nelemo. Ayakama do do do.
Yeah, you look at my, oh, my, they're like, eh. Oh, you're not, oh, yeah, I can, I can, eh. Anya be, oh, I'm not be, but, oh, oh, oh.
Oh, me no be, eh, oh, me no be, ke, ma kola, oh. Chi no noke. N'anyekela, mo ke, ma kola, oh. Eh, no, ah, na, chumo. Eh, lebe, na, kamu, ge si, yeah, oh. Ma beti, ma, she, na, kamu, ge si, na, kachingo. Get chi kama, oh, you're bu palanomwea, oh. Get chi kama, so you're bu palanomwea, oh. And.
Yes, sir.
Are we? Honorable Milike?
Yes, sir.
Where are we?
Yes, uh, your remarks, uh. Okay. Closing remarks, Mark.
Uh, 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 moving.
I think so, but we have one hand up, let's pick the hand before. Honorable Milike, CEO, uh, PM, uh, APM wants you on the mic. If you are there, reach out to the mic, please. Lobe, unmute yourself.
Oh, yes, I'm here.
Lobe, unmute yourself. Lobe, unmute yourself, Lobe. Lobe, unmute yourself.
Yes, sir, good evening, sir.
There were, go ahead.
Ah, thank you, my Minister of Information, APM, God bless you. God bless you for picking the mountain. Thank you for standing your ground on this time. Biafrans are with you. We are strongly behind you. I'm going to support, uh, tonight town hall with five thousand AJ. My Twitter name is, uh, Alob, my Twitter name is Alobi. So, I will support, I will send to Lagos. I support tonight, town hall with five thousand AJ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much, Mazilobe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Akamarama kaika korowana, Mazilobe.
Thank you. We have, uh.
Thank you, God bless you, keep it up.
Thank you. Miriamma, Miriamma, over to you. Miriamma, unmute yourself. Miriamma, unmute yourself. Miriamma, unmute yourself, Nkiruka, unmute yourself. Miriamma, over to you.
I don't know if I'm coming out loud.
Yes, we can hear you now, go ahead.
I can hear you, sir.
Uh, I greet you all, more especially, I greet you my APM. Uh, today I said I must surely come to, um, this, uh, location today. Even when they were picking color, that was when I wanted to raise my hand.
I didn't know.
But I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm happy for what is going on.
What about the one, moi?
So, my APM, I want to greet you for standing strong for our, our PM. And also, I greet all of you, the cabinet, and my good brother, Sammy. In fact, uh, uh, I never believed that, uh, your deputy can do what to do. But God is so kind, he still have men with good integrity. May God continue to keep you. So I just want to support what we are doing with the ten, uh, ten thousand AJ. And I will do it as usual to my, to Lagos, God bless them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maziloma.
Thank you.
Akamarama kaika korowana, Maziloma. Eh, yo, eh, yo. Akanchawasa.
Thank you, Nkiruka, over to you.
Okay. Hey, my sister, she, 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 I must, oh, my, my. Eh, eh, did I hear my, my?
Because I muted.
Oh, my goodness.
And I will give you this, your ear, eh? Hey.
Okay, our APM, yes, so we appreciate you.
Thank you.
We cherish you, all right. Okay, so, um, I take my own moi, moi, yes, so, with, um, bit, um, anyway, yes, I know.
Yeah, so moi, moi, they shall, we get, we get everything.
All right. Okay, so let me use my, um, thirty AJ to complete my money today for. It's, so it's to round up to hundred and ten AJ, yes, so thank you.
Wow.
Thank you so much.
Our darling sister, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Kiru.
Thank you. There were, thank you so much.
Akamarama kaika korowana, Ezia dan Kiru. This is for you, special.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You are awesome.
Honorable you.
Please.
Honorable Yunis, reporting with thirty thousand AJ. On behalf of.
Wow.
On behalf of Galoude. Thank you, thank you.
There were, Sister Yunis, thank you.
Darling sister, we love you.
Thank you so much. Honorable Yunis. Honorable Yunis. Akamarama kaika korowana, Wada Yunis, oh. There were.
You.
Thank you.
Then, what you need?
Akanchawa, Akanchawa.
Then we come to EN, EN, your hand is up, over to you.
Yeah, um, hello, everyone, I will make a payment of hundred, uh, AJ in support of the APM speech. Uh, sorry, I slept off, uh, sorry, yes, I'll make a payment of hundred AJ. And, uh, APM, I want you to know that, uh, I always look forward to your speeches. That's actually why I always come to all these town halls, because I want to hear you speak. Because you, uh, you give us a lot of courage and, uh, you, uh, support at this, uh, through the, uh, you've given us a lot of, uh, courage and, uh, support through this, uh, difficult, uh, six months. So I wanted to, and I want to know that people in UK appreciate the work that, uh, you have been doing, thank you. I will make my, I will make my payments before going back to sleep, thank you.
Thank you, I want that so much, thank you.
I hope you, you have the, uh, PayPal link, right?
Uh, yeah, actually, actually, I've always made a payment through PayPal, because I just didn't want to fall into all those new dimension and blah, blah situations. So I've always used PayPal for my payments.
Okay, thank you very much, there were, thank you.
Thank you.
Akamarama kaika korowana, Wada EN. Thank you, God bless.
Thank you so much.
EN, more Akanchawa to you. It's a.
It's a, it's a.
It's a, it's a mighty God, over to you, sir.
Yes, I just remember something, um, real quick, before we close, I, I, I could have asked privately, but I just wanted to ask publicly, because I, I know some other people might be affected with this. Or may have some questions, is regarding the, um, one thousand men. It, where, because next week, my, this week we are entering, my one thousand men will come out. So, is it still going to this account that this people took?
APM can respond to that.
Yeah, I think, uh. Uh, uh, when, when, when do you say? When do you say it's coming out?
It's coming out on the, I think, seven or eight of, of, of next month, on this month, you're about to enter, July. It comes out around every seventh or eighth.
We're gonna be making announcement probably before then, so for all subscriptions. We know if we let that theory, uh, continue, or you can just, uh, uh, you can just unsubscribe for now. Until you get everything situated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, APM. All right. We continue, we move. So we are rounding up, we are rounding up, we are rounding up, Honorable COS, are you here?
Yeah, yes, my Minister of Information, greetings from here.
There were, APM, on you before.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity once again. Um, APM in Nubilea now. Most of us are coming here to hear you speak to us, you know? Uh, for those who say that they don't like to hear your voice, that's okay. Uh, you don't need to like the APM, he is our APM, the APM of the Biafra people.
Yes, sir.
If you don't like him, that's okay, uh, stay on your seat, stay in your house. Just, uh, do what you're supposed to do for Biafra as a Biafran. That's all that we ask of every genuine Biafran at this time. Whatever you have to do, just keep doing it. My honorable rep, Milike, thank you so much for this wonderful town hall. Uh, Chinny, Deputy Texas, you know, we cowboys are here.
Yes, so.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yes, we're there, yeah.
Down here, we don't, we don't really care so much about all this nonsense, you know? They know, they know how it is, you know?
That's right.
Oh, my, can they, oh, my, can they, I'd have, I'd have for somebody, I'd have for people. They have for, and others, they're in our backseat.
One, I do, they can't come, oh.
People need to learn.
Yes.
This Biafra that we are in, I made it very clear to some people in this, our Biafra. When they asked me about this, our APM, I said, for APM, I know he means business. Nobody should distract him, nobody should distract our Minister of Information, I've said this over and over again. And those people that I told this, today they are distracting this, these men, because there are things we need to understand as Biafrans. What is going on back home? Our recognition? And the way we pass our information to the rest of the world, these are the things that we must all cherish and hold dear. Our Minister of Information has remained consistent, the same thing that only others, consistency. Our PM came up and stayed on it, consistency. Our Minister of Information, oh, I couldn't fly since Obido from beginning, oh, 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 I got, oh, I got, oh, I got, oh, there's no corner, corner. That is why, even the people that called him, uh, Wise One, they are forgetting that he's wise. And in his wisdom, he will help to pilot us with our APM. And the rest of each and every one of us here doing what we're doing to get to Biafra. Because, in the Biafra, in the, in the program. And I'm a student, you know, cool, you know. My candy gas in the mother, so yes, I'm a soon, I have a more happy, I'm a gonna see.
There were.
No, you know, what are you?
Why, sir?
My that I call her, yeah, only super me, can I watch?
Google.
You do a model, you know, but I call her. All the female are here, unique people, Dalu no, thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable.
My, my, I, you're gonna be after, because if I speak privately with anybody, there is one thing I keep begging. Because. Only obuna, try and put our A P M in prayers. The stress is much, any person who understands what stress is. Should know the stress is undergoing right now is much, it can only take the grace of God. For you know, that, that, oh, I'm bother there, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, because. And my queen, I can't mother, why I buy three, four A M, because, you know, I'm going to know about it. When you hear his voice in the morning, you're going to know he's been up for a very long time, so put him in your prayers, please. It's a Tony and do not marry to tell our P M, it's a tower A P M, it's a tower uh defense forces on there, can you?
Yes, sir.
Dalu no, thank you all.
Dalu, sir, Dalu, thank you so much, Honorable C O S.
Well said.
Thank you. Honorable, no, yeah, because yes, you are so. Okay. Atama, Ramaka, Enga, Koro, Honorable, La, Bobio. Honorable, I'm up, you there, well. There were our C O S, God bless you.
I think we, we have uh more hands coming up.
Alright.
Uh, go ahead. Honorable Minister of Information, okay, Sister Love, go ahead, uh, your hands up.
Yes, so, you know. What can I, what can you conquer? Okay, I'm a go, could be key.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, you can care about, about, could be key.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah. Okay, you can care about, go, could be key.
Uh huh.
And he doesn't look like a C Britain. Why would anybody charge him for not speaking English? Eh, you know something? Ah, pure for daughter.
Yes, uh huh.
Age in twenty, age in man. Now, I see, in the Charlie D O, uh, my A P M school, how I do, I be, I go to school here. That brings New York to seventeen fifty.
Fifty, yes.
Yes. A P M. As one okay, wow, okay, yeah, but over.
Yeah, but over.
But to buy, yeah. Wow. Thank you so much, Honorable Love. Atama, Ramaka, Enga, Koro, Honorable, Love.
There were. Yeah, okay, I think I'm able to drag our, our wonderful C O S out. I'm like, we are, we are, yeah, that, I say, where, where is this uh C O S, I say, I beg, I'm off here. And he said it all, he said, uh, in key, look, so forward ever, we are not going back.
Yes, sir.
We are moving forward and we are moving to our destination. Please, the case of Biafra, we hold it so dear.
Thank you.
Ever there is no serious to fight this fight with us, get out.
Exactly.
Too many people have died, even as of today, we have casualties as well.
Hmm.
But there's more casualty on the other side, the enemies, Nigerian state and the Fulani salesman. We are at war, and we know what war is all about, the killers will kill them. And we are defending ourselves, some can be on social media committing, knows that why? You have the real men defending our land. These people that have nothing to offer, if they really want to offer something, if they can use their platform right? Or if they can support, let them pack their load, go to Biafra land. And defend our land.
That's right.
You stop preaching this garden English of political correctness. If they don't want to be part of what we are doing, they don't, they, they can support us, step aside. People have, have lost their life in this uh great cause, defending it. Do we all remember who Ikonso is?
Oh, yeah.
Of course, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Life?
Oh, yeah.
All happened because he's fighting to free his people. Our leader, Mazinam, the kind of the kidnappings is two thousand and twenty-one. Where he is, maybe he have not tested palm wine for all this while, he have not eaten, what is you? He have not having a life, normal life. It's somewhere in cage. Our Prime Minister since November, how many most now? They have taken their freedom from them for now. And why some of us in social media? Some monetize their platform, they make money from it, they make money from PayPal, this car model Biafrans begging their money. It's not a problem to make money from it. It's not a problem if you ask your fellow citizens to support you, to support your platform. But don't use your platform to destroy what we are doing, don't use your platform for propaganda, lies and deceit. We might be few. But I strongly believe, and I, I know you believe, we overcome.
Yes, so.
Journey is not gonna be easy, our leader Mazinam, the kind of said, it's never gonna be easy. Never gonna be easy. Nothing good come very easy, go do your research, nothing good come very easy, you always work for it. Even those that won't believe in God's kingdom, that want to go into God's kingdom, the Bible made it clear. Broad is the road to destruction. Why narrow is what? To salvation. This journey is not gonna be easy, the closer we get to Biafra, the harder it will be. So I just encourage every one of us to be stronger, to be tough, to be tougher. Buckle up your seatbelt. Don't have no pity, no mercy for those that have come to kill or destroy us. If you don't destroy them, they will destroy you. If you don't defend yourself, they will take you down. Just like today what happened, we saw the armor tanker going in. What is the armor tanker going in, you know, key way to do? Is the armor tanker going? To celebrate for a party? That armor tanker you see is going to kill your people. To kill your brother, sister, uncle, Biafrans. And some of our Biafrans think is funny. This time around is not like business before. Whoever dare to bring us down, before you get to us, we'll get to you. Enough is enough for over twenty years, all the sabotages. They just be patrolling, moving around, walking around freely. Either you are with us or you not, but if you within us. Dragging us back. Just be careful. It's better you get out, resign. Support is not by force that eighty millions have to be in the cabinet. It's not by force that you have to be in the, a member of the cabinet or rep or admin. As a citizen of Biafra, you can support financially. Not until you are a member of the cabinet before you can do that. We all can't be at the head, then what we need to do is to support those at the head that are pioneering this great cause. Either you are with us or you not with us. Please. The word of encouragement to all of us is that Biafra is here. Very soon, we totally regain our freedom. And our leader Mazinam, the can would believe he will be released very soon, because Nigerian terrorist country have no choice, they have to let him go. Our Prime Minister likewise, they have to release him. By the way, Russia. You, uh, Finland used to be under Russia. And Finland fought to free themselves from Russia. That is exactly what our Prime Minister is doing. If they want to quote the Bible or quote the law of how to fight for freedom, they should come and teach us if we don't know. Nothing we are doing now that is wrong. Nothing that we are doing now that countries before us have not. This great country called United States of America, they fought the Great Britain. They didn't use martial to do that, they use all kinds of logistics, armor tank, guns, machine guns and all that. They fought brutal war to free themselves. If United States of America is telling us what we are doing is wrong, let them come, let's sit on the round table. Let them, let them give us the map, the road to how we'll be free. We'll be asking all international community to come and tell we Biafrans, how do they want us to do this? Because they're not going to come and do that, because it's our responsibility. To fight and defend our land. India fought to free themselves from the British. Over sixty, seventy percent of country in the world, they fought for their freedom. Because it can never be given to you, that is just a fact. As I'm speaking Somalia, they are doing the same. And Bosnia, they are fighting. I mean Somalia land. Israel, they want to have a good democratic system. Please, Biafrans, it's time we do what is right. There's no kind of, or any amount of preaching, I'm coming to preach right now, that our leader Mazinam, the can have not done over. Years ago. There's no kind of exposition how to expose the Nigerian atrocity against Biafra. That our Prime Minister Mazie Simon, I have not, did any of us remember when our Prime Minister used to spend two, three, four hours every day?
Yes, sir. Every day.
Doing what? Preaching, preaching, exposing the Nigerian state. We have learned a lot. And the greatest teachers have taught us a lot. It's up to us now to do what is right, if you're not doing what is right. Um, I would consider you maybe you one of the Fulanis among us. A true Biafrans. Step up to defend Biafra land. Our people have been killed every day, every day, there is war going in Biafra land. People are being kidnapped in Biafra land by the terrorist Nigeria and the Fulani salesman. There's a lot of organ traffickers in Biafra land. And people that are doing this are the Nigerian politicians. People that are doing this are the Nigerian state and the terrorists. They are exploiting this opportunity. That they feel like the Biafrans are not doing enough. But we need to prove them wrong, that our land belong to us. We must defend and protect our land, thank you from here, there were.
There was.
All the, uh, every Biafran that have contributed today to support our freedom. And the Zell and PayPal is open twenty-four hours, please, what we are doing. If necessary, this is only how we can get our freedom. If we waiting for America to come and give us a gemma. Or Russia, we are wasting our time. Who do this, and we are called to do this, we are born to do this. No ma, no man or woman born. Of a woman that can stop Biafra repression, thank you.
Thank you, A P M.
Thank you, Honorable A P M.
Thank you.
There.
We appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate you so much.
You so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, so we come to the end of the day. Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Hmm.
Eh eh, um, I don't know, I'm a can get sing with the number, please, I need to talk to you about the. This uh Zello.
On PayPal, okay, okay, I'll forward my number to you.
Okay, thank you.
We have one, one more thing, we have one more thing.
From you, eh.
And as a prayer, a closing prayer, uh, I will have, uh, uh.
Amaka will eat a cake.
Yeah, okay, uh, let's take Amaka first. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm a nun, I like it, yeah, good.
Yeah, bring them, come. My money is coming, I just want to use the opportunity to thank everybody for supporting me today, supporting Ohio. Um, as many that uh put their money to uh ship our paper soup. May God Almighty bless your pockets. May God replenish it and the, hopefully we keep doing this, we are doing it for ourselves. The money is not going to my bank account, it's going to the Zell. So that's what we are doing, we, we keep doing it. I said thank you so, so much, and if you can allow me, give me just one minute. Let me say something that is bothering me. Last night, I tried as much as I can to sleep, but when I turned, I remembered that. I want to send it, a message to. One lady, they said, she was, um, she was called a former Mama Biafra. Um, I want to sa- tell the, that, the, the mama, that what she's doing, I am disappointed on her. She said yesterday I was listening to her and the three of them over there. Yeah, she was telling them that whenever she come to the fundraising, that we are not making any money. And that after a while she will use a, put fifty dollars, so that something will start happening. That they are not putting any money, I want to ask her or tell her the same mouth. You're the same mouth, you used to say that. Uh, A P M is eating the money, is the same mouth you are using to say that money is not coming. I want to ask her, which money is, um, is, is, um.
A P M eating.
Are using, ma- uh, making use of, why are you people are confusing yourself and confusing people, gullible ones? You said that A P M is bribing, that she, he is using the money we are contributing to bribe. And you turn around and say that no money is coming. Which one we, we follow, I think that you are old enough to mind what you are saying. At least we are, sometimes we are matured, before you talk, you, you think. You, when you are, when things is going well with you, with, with you and somebody. You said good of that person, I know how you defended A P M. When they called, said, started talking about, um, um. Uh, 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 what, what, how do they say that, uh, um, come and do the, give us, um, accounts? When accountability started, they were accusing him, and you, mommy, former Biafra, uh, Mama Biafra. You, you defended A P M that he was on the, on the way for Biafrans. When A P M called and A P M's called, but he was on the way and he couldn't give that account. Why are you saying this? Mommy, it is not good, I, I, I'm trying to be civil, I don't want to abuse anybody, but some things is, is so bad. And the, the other lady kept on talking ro- uh, trash, saying, calling people. And counterize A P M, telling them that he is not a good person, and you will turn and say that people hate him, you are the one that. That, um, uh, um, blackmailing him, poisoning people's hearts on him. And you come out and say that nobody likes him, nobody love him, I want to tell you that you don't need to love him, leave him for us.
Yes, sir.
We love him, we love whatever he's doing, when he changed, we will change. We are not gullible like some of you, whenever things change, we, we ask question. So I want to just, I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity, I don't want to talk about the other man. That said that he was being bribed and he was getting, taking the money. But one question I want to ask him is, do you know how much, how many hours you can work to get one thousand dollars?
Hmm.
Or you be able to get a thousand dollars, and somebody was giving you that money, and you were collecting it. You didn't say anything, you were making use of it, and you said on and on, he, he gave you a lot, you have a lot of receipts. You were collecting it and making use of it, and then now you turned to pull him down. You can see now that Biafra is not, they are no longer kids, you cannot, you cannot, you cannot change our brain. Everybody has known it, you cannot be pushing us up and down, we are now following. What we think or we feel is right, when things changed, nobody will tell us, we will change, so be careful. Be careful. It's not because Naginamadun, so you, you, you blackmailed that person, be careful when things was going well with you. A J U D H N E N E, so.
Yes, uh huh.
I, I, I rest my case, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, let me just use the opportunity to let Biafra know that this woman in question, she's not Mama Biafra.
Exactly.
She is Mama Fulani from now, she can never be, she is an evil woman.
Oh.
Uh, she at the time said it's because of the so-called surrogate, she started nonsense only. Two thousand and twenty-three, around January, so I don't, I know when she. She is two-faced, she is not a good person to start with. And this is a person that they want her to handle, which I can't, uh, they are dreaming. The same person will actually be the one to take it out public. The same person will be the one to cause some problem, thank God, I don't want to dwell on that, I matter. But they are not relevant, they are not consistent, liars, blackmailer. You know, they think they can keep deceiving Biafrans for so long, that time. And whoever brought her back, you know, with whoever she's working with, shame to all of them. Biafrans, we are smarter than this, you cannot bring your enemy into your house, thinking that everything will be okay. They have sabotaged this movement, they put us in this mess that we are today.
Hmm hmm.
All of them, yeah, they collude with Ngosi, so what, when do they change? The same people said you should hold them accountable, uh, during uh some stuff going on. In the new dimension, that if anything happened in that, I can't, who I can't. How she account to the mess she did, please, uh, I don't want this program to be focused of, of them, better. Thank our sister, I believe she, uh, the Mama Fulani getting the message, can go and deceive those that she want to deceive evil. Evil old age person that don't know that she, she's supposed to use her old age. To help Biafrans, was to use her old age wisdom.
That could be.
Peace, harmony to her people. That she just here fooling herself today with Ngosi tomorrow with, uh. Please, uh, they are not relevant, we are already moved from that, uh, crops that they tried to put us in, thank you. Thank you very much, there.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you, A P M, uh, please, uh, before I start to my, with my prayers. Can we give our sister, Honorable Amaka, some rendition? Please, she has tried so much with this presentation she did with our special paper soup, A P M.
Yes, uh, she deserved it.
Yeah, she did well, so where is our musician? Honorable, no, yeah.
Are they here?
Oh, yeah, Olu, Olu.
Amaka, this one is for you.
Okay.
Amara, Makanga, Koro, Ezia, the Amaka.
Ah, mama, mama. You did well, God bless you, and Ohio, we thank you guys. You did well. God bless you. And Ohio, we thank you guys. We thank all our friends. Who have donated.
New York, New York step up today, just as usual.
And, and that is right. We, we going to please, uh, give New York, Akancha Wanguano, musician.
Akamarama Kanyagakuru ndi New Yorko.
Alright, one more person, one more special person before, before we go. One more special person is our honorable.
Mazza Parawa.
Star. Guess what?
Akbarawa.
Wow. Come on, come on, special rendition for this, our honorable. Come on, guys, come on.
This one goes for you. Special song for honorable Akbarawa. Yes. Honorable Akbarawa.
Yes, his second name will be Consistency Personified.
That's right.
Oh, wow.
The wise one. Thank you so much. So, uh, honorable Emily K, do you want me to? To say the, the prayers? Okay?
Yes, yes, go for it.
Ikono, let's pray. Like to sing if I pray. So sing along with me, brothers and sisters. Ebbe, ebbe kibo. Ebbe, ebbe kibo. Ebbe, ebbe kibo. Ebbe, ebbe na reke la yo. Ebbe, ebbe kibo. Ebbe, ebbe kibo. Ebbe, ebbe kibo. Ebbe, ebbe. Ebbe, ebbe kibo chukwama. Ebbe, ebbe kibo. Ebbe, ebbe kibo. Datina reke la yo. Ebbe, ebbe kibo. Ebbe, ebbe kibo. Ebbe, ebbe kibo. Chukwana la yo. Okay, abu na ha chukwoki kabiama.
He said.
Why, lachineke, uh, nku su ni leke ndiaga. Chikagura yina ya chinku mu Biafra. Chikana zanyenbe rechineke. Nkana luranyaga zorezo na ke potariye. Onyezeo mume. Ayu bu mugi ezukola. Wesi ka ikele kwa gozo. Ni yo mani ine, mki meranyi na kine meranyi na kige meranyi chineke. Ayu na si gekele drigi na ha chukwoki kabiama. Ayu we ne tiye ndisi anyu no bakagi bu Mazin Amdekanu. Na uya weke bu Mazie, honorable PM Simon Eba. Ne tiye hanakagi diso. Ni ni hetiye re nakagana ha Akanchara. Onakwana awoka Jehovah. Ayu we na si gi ebbe, ebbe kende so. Wera kagi DK wepo potara indisi anyi. Kahara bi keni ine ndi na bamba, we megi deha. Wesi na haga ha potachi neke. Ayu na ria gi, kega banje, me di siha na ha chukwoki kabiama. Kabena diganya, kaha we potani ke ne bubbe. Kayi bu mugi wezuko, we tora gi mama, we barage gudenso. Ni no ru ru gi. No bakagi ka inetifekwa, abu na di APM anye. Bu honorable Mazie oge chuku, no bakagi we na raka mara ne lisiya. Chineka inmani hekwa, inki tiya, we ne me. Na di ra fe Jehovah. Ayu bakwana, ayu, ayu wa bu madu, anyati hike, na abu na ni gi bu, onye DK. Ayu we na ria mara. Na Ngosi, na mku chiki da maki ne lisiya. Ndira ba na yo kiri kiri chineke. Manaka gi DK, no nyere ya. Ayu we na si gi na bi kola ya, agani ne. Inke, ayu bu mu madha po ye lora ya. Mku chiki te ya ne ke ore, afoda woa. Kahara bi keni le, ko chichiri. Kahara ba jo mo, ajo madu, ajo weke, ajo wa, ino swimming. Chineke, tiye ha ni hera kacha si here na ha chukwoki kabiama. Ayu we na si na ni do twa, na ha driga nama, na ha chukwoki kabiama. Onyezeo mume. Ayu na u mu na ni bu mu Biafra, ndidi na kaha docha. Ayu zukola, we na si gi na, wera kagi di ngosi we goza yini ne. Kahara bakadi ine ke nyero niye, chineke bi ko goziha. Abu na di u mu na yidi ke ne, we ho twa ha ha chineke, mano biha bu kahane. Na ina si gi, bi ko gozi kwa ndi do twa, go we ru ku ngoso kaha we nyekwa. Ni na, iha ine mebi hemwa. Na, ayu na si gekele drigi. We na si yo kikabiama, chineke nku su ni leke. Ayu we na itife, enja osani, bu our men on ground. General Butuzo, now, General Gentle, now all our commanders. No bakagi onyezeo mume. Ayu na poro gi siala, we de tri gi po ne, perega kwaneli siha. Na si yo kakaa. Iye ni ne keha ja luaga, na bi ko ro potara ha. Ayu we jiro paragi, we na saha, unapalia. We jiri kegi ne, we ne mku chiha. Na si ge na bi ko. Batara hosenyamako, bu na de depana babuha. Iye ni ne keha geji luaga, we lu pola indi no chineke. Ropo ta ya na ha Jesus. Ayu na si yo kikabiama. Ki we no nyere ha neke, no nyere ha nori, nori reha na fo. No nyaku reha na, uko onyezeo mume. Ka ni roha pe hutaha, kaha we brudi kana uka ni ro. We ne nyekwa ha woto, woto si bi ke na ha chukwoki kabiama.
He said.
Na ha de di no loha ka inetifekwa no bakagi na si gi na e mano de ro fe. Kamine ne, iye na di gi fe ko we eden fe. With you, everything is possible. I commit all our soldiers in the blood of Jesus Christ. And we begin to ask you, chukwoki kabiama. Ki we no nyere ha. Oga direleleha nama. Ayu ge matere di Biafra na ha chukwoki kabiama. Ikona mu na ke ne, isoke te, muero we ke Biafra, chineke. Kulika no cheze gi we tiri si ka huni ne. Abu na di ke ni ne ke prete, di ke ni ne ke janja wi. Di ke ni no si no bu no si na ndida. Na ku to seha na ha Jesus.
He said.
Ya we na onyezeo mume. Anya ba lambo ke kesweha in Jehovah. And we pray that you will multiply. This little that we have given from the bottom of our hearts, Father, multiply it. Any enemy of our defense forces. Any enemies that is blackmailing our defense, chineke. Oh my God, the God of the, 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 the blood of the fallen heroes. Cheers after them. May they not have peace, may they not see good in the name of chukwoki kabiama. We thank you for everything. We know that we will come back again because we still need your help. We will come back next week and you will be with us. Thank you for the great Biafran people that gathered here yesterday. Then today they came back again, oh yes, to honor you in this platform. Father, you said that no one can eat your glory and that is why we say. Let your name be praised, Lord Jesus. Let your name be glorified, honored and praised now and forevermore. And we say, he said, he said.
He said.
Thank you, Lord, hallelujah.
Thank you.
Thank you, brothers and sisters. We have had a very successful.
We call here our APM Wisdom one thousand men.
He said.
He said.
He said.
I don't know.
Thank you.
I don't know. You have a great day.
Thank you, Uchi, for that wonderful prayer.
So much, thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Uchi, it's like, uh, Ebra and the spirit, God's spirit. Thank you, buddy.